Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody here at our Spanish Fork City Planning Commission meeting this evening. Good to see you guys that are here and we welcome you. To begin with tonight, we'd like to recognize that Commissioner Mitchell is not with us this evening, he's got prior commitments. We also recognize that our youth council member of our committee, Owen Young, is here with us again tonight, welcome to him. Tonight, we will start our meeting with the pledge to the flag and Shawna Warnock will lead us in the pledge.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeguised, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda tonight is approval of the minutes from November. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our next item of business is a zone change. As a matter of fact, we have two of them, they'll both be public hearings. The first one is the Blunk Zone Change and Dave, who is going to be presenting on this?
Mr. Mann.
Very good, Mr. Mann, would you help us with that?
Bear with us for a minute, gotta get the presentation up and running, here we go. Oh, not quite. Yeah, I sent you the other one. While he's bringing that up, the first item is a zone change request for the Blunk property located approximately 999 West, 3800 North, about seven and a half acres. It's currently a rural residential, if you go to the next slide, as you can see, it's completely surrounded by industrially zoned properties and developments. There's some developments in the area such as J6 Industrial, Stockman Flats, DB Industrial, and North Airport Industrial. So the proposal for this, if you can go to the next slide, you can see the future land use has also been, it's also industrial as well, like the other surrounding properties. The next slide shows a concept plan that was discussed with the DRC, kind of the direction that the applicant is looking to do with an industrial development with multiple units for various types of businesses that would be operated there with access onto 3800 North. There is an issue with unresolved parcel on 3800 North that had to be resolved during the subdivision process to get that properly dedicated. And yeah, staff is recommending approval and I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Any questions? Thanks. Have we got the applicant here that would like to talk about this? State your name.
Derek Terry, Caseville. Yeah, pretty straightforward, his staff has explained, just, you know, we believe this is a good site for light industrial to add to the city and we're obviously willing to work with the surrounding uses to make sure it's a good fit for the city.
Any special attributes or issues that you see with the property?
No, I mean, as you mentioned, just the protection strips that are there that we're in the process of resolving and will have resolved prior to moving forward.
Actual construction.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for me?
Any questions to the applicant? Excuse me. Seeing none, we'll go forward then.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so we will now go into public hearing and invite the public, anyone that would like to speak about this item can come to the microphone and introduce yourself. We do hold our comments to about three minutes per person that would like to comment. If there's anyone that would like to come forward, come forward at this time. Seeing none, we will close our public hearing. Any questions for staff or the applicant from the commissioners?
Can you explain the land dedication a little bit more?
Yeah, certainly Byron, I don't know if you can, perhaps to switch over to the just regular GIS.
Also, all of your guys' mics are a little, we can't hear you very well.
How about that? Better? When the surrounding properties were developed, the group that developed them, or that stills in the process of developing them, purchased a piece of property from the Blunk family and right now that's a separate parcel. The line work on our mapping system's a little bit hard to make out, maybe Byron, you could kind of emphasize it with the cursor there. That property is currently owned by the Clyde Company and one of the things that we'll resolve most likely with the next step on this, the, just the plating process with the development, would be to have, what we're seeing there is that parcel dedicated to Spanish Fork City and/or UDOT, I think probably in part would go to each of those two different entities, which is just a customary, excuse me, I need to drink more Coca-Cola. That's just a customary part of development, but we want to make sure that it gets addressed and that's why it's in the notes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the proposed zone change from RR Rural Residential to I-1 Light, is that correct? To be recommended for approval based on the staff findings.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes, or that issue passes. Our next item on the agenda tonight is another zone change, item number B on our number four, it is the Roots Coffee Zone Change.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is one that we as staff are pretty excited about, so I frankly hope the Planning Commission and City Council see it the same way. I've known it while I've worked for Spanish Fork City as the American, excuse me, the America First Credit Union site just across Center Street from us here. They left the site over a year ago now and the proposal is to adapt that property so it can be used as a coffee shop. And for a few different reasons, it is, I'm gonna say impossible, to use the site for the proposed use without having the development enhancement overlay approved for it. In fact, I'd go as far as to say that that zoning tool was really created for sites like this. But the property that we're talking about, the corner of First West and Center Street, on the northeast corner there of that intersection, relatively small site, in fact Byron, if you can go to the aerial image, I think it's probably gonna be the most helpful. It's currently a zone commercial office like we saw on the last slide, I think it's actually the next slide, but thanks, yeah, any of those work. So this is the property that we're talking about here and I'm gonna focus on some of the things that we as staff think need to change with the site in order for it to work well with the proposed use. But before I get into that, the proposal as we understand it involves taking the existing structure and turning it into, like I said, a coffee shop. There has been a drive-through and would continue to be, the drive-through window has been on the west-facing side of the building over here. Patrons have been able to get to and from the site in a couple of ways that we think potentially are problematic. Really, really large driveways like what exists today on Center Street and First West both are things that we try to avoid in order to reduce the area that people, it goes without saying, to make the points of entrance and exit on sites more clear and concise. That's just a matter of trying to make traffic circulate and function as safely and as best as it can. By way of how the site's challenged in terms of meeting some of the city's criteria, as has been the case with other projects that have used the development enhancement overlay, it's almost always a matter of meeting our landscape requirements and parking. And I think actually in this case, they probably come very close to meeting the landscape requirement, but would fall short on meeting or providing the amount of parking that we would require for the use. And I'll maybe touch more on that in a minute, but do you have any questions about the site? Maybe we will, let's go to Byron, I think it's...
Residential, a residence to the north?
It is, yeah, it's a good question, so there's...
Solid fence required along the property line?
Masonry wall, yep, adjacent to a residential use.
One of my big concerns with headlights covered around.
Exactly, yep. Let's go to the slide with the site plan. There we go. So the proposal, and we think this really does address our biggest concerns as staff, would modify the existing entrance from Center Street to the site by way of consolidating it on the east side of the site, which actually would require the property owner which owns both this property and the property to the east to relocate a fence that separates this site from a body shop that operates next door. So they'd move that to the east, far enough to accommodate a driveway to be created on the east property line of the proposed use. Among other things, that makes it so that a large power pole that's located, give or take, right here can be avoided. That could be relocated, but would be quite costly to do so. The traffic pattern is indicated with arrows that are shown on the plan here. I believe the intent is to keep the drive-through window where it is now, is that right? So you can kind of picture the travel pattern proceeding on the site, you know, perhaps something like this, or maybe like this, which also helps with one of our concerns that I don't think we really ever saw it with the credit union use. It's been a significant challenge on what was Johnny's on Canyon Road where vehicles stack up enough to be problematic in front of the homes that are adjacent to that business there. And by way of aligning the drive aisles the way that they have and promoting this type of traffic pattern, we think that has some propensity at least to reduce the likelihood that that would happen. And also, you know, by way of restricting entrances to the site as well on First West, as is shown here, we think could work quite well. As the development enhancement, you know, kind of that title suggests, the intent really is to take a site that might remain vacant, unimproved, underutilized, and so forth for quite some time, but for providing an opportunity for somebody to come up with a way to make it work without meeting all of the classic zoning criteria. I think this proposal is a great example of how that could happen. We are, we're pretty concerned about parking in Spanish Fork and making sure that uses of all types have enough parking. We do feel like this location, in a lot of ways, it's not unlike similar businesses that we have on Main Street, for example, that likewise don't have a lot of off-street parking, they happen to be zoned differently, so they're playing by a different set of rules. But there actually is a considerable amount of on-street parking in the vicinity of this use, some of it might be across the street where we have the angled parking and that type of a thing, but really not concerned about this creating a parking problem at all, particularly given what they're proposing to provide onsite and view it as a great opportunity to take that site and to put it to use in a way that could be, I think, really, really good for the community in various ways. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
Yes, okay, I have a few. So, the things that makes it so we have to do the overlay that doesn't comply is the amount of parking? How much more parking would they need for this to comply?
Give me a quick moment and I'll tell you.
Oh, that's fine.
Can I add on to that? And what's the difference between this use and the former use with the parking requirements?
Okay.
Then my other question is, the fence line, is that part of what makes it not comply? Cause you have to, the fence they're moving to the property line? And what's our, what's the ordinance? You can't have it on the property line, or is that, remind me?
So the fence that's on the east boundary of the site now, let's say, that's only being moved, so right now, it's where that dashed line is, so to speak. It's being moved so that you can have the driveway here.
Right, I just thought I read in the notes that it's being moved to be on the property line, is that correct?
Uh...
That was in the DRC notes, I think.
I do think the existing fence isn't right on the property line, so it's probably being moved to be closer to that, but that is not the main reason for moving the fence, it's rather to accommodate the driveway.
Right, yeah. And then my other question about this is, to go along with Joseph's, will it be a masonry wall all on two sides there that border both, both properties?
Yeah, just the property line in the north.
Not on the...
Not where it abuts a non-residential use to the east, we don't have the same requirement there.
Okay. And you already addressed the parking on the street, do we? This, I guess this is for the, this is for the...
Applicant.
Applicants. My next question's for the applicant, but I think part of my question was, is the, is the coffee shop going to, is it gonna be just a drive-through coffee shop, or will it be a place people can come in and sit? And my question for you Dave about that is, do we have a separate parking requirement for a place that only is a drive-through business, rather than a, you'd only have to have parking for employees versus a place you can come in and sit?
Yeah, I don't believe we do have a separate parking requirement for, for example, it might be like a swig. They generally have quite a bit less square footage and that's how our parking requirements are administered, so they do end up, if you don't have a seating area, generally businesses, by way of what our code would define as required parking, they don't need as much.
Cause I was thinking about like the Dutch Brothers that's in the...
Yeah, that's a good example as well, yeah.
Okay. So we don't have a separate, there's no separate code for if they're just a drive-through?
I can't, no, I don't believe there is.
But that, it sounds like that might not apply in this situation.
I think so.
Who owns the land where the new fence is going on the east side?
The same property owner.
But is it on a different parcel?
Byron, do you wanna pull up the aerial?
So that's their two distinct parcels, yes.
Yeah, I don't know if the city gets into this, but you wanna get an easement in place now?
I think the DRC note basically is to do a boundary line agreement where this boundary line on the east is moved to match the fence, that's what we kind of were requiring in DRC.
Great idea Byron.
Oh, that's what that was saying in the DRC?
Move the boundary with the fence through a boundary line agreement.
Okay, I didn't understand.
That's even more permanent.
And then I guess my last question was about the Lone Ranger home that's on that block and the impact on there, but I guess Joseph addressed that.
And there is a bit of a history there with this property, that it was originally a service station slash convenience store originally, changed hands a couple of times, then it's been a financial institution through several different hands, so it has been a commercial property for a long time and has had the, you know, traffic that's kind of similar in some ways when it was a service station, or when it was a gas station slash convenience store. Any other questions for Dave?
I mean, I do, we were just talking, I like the landscaping, cause right now it's all asphalt and concrete, so landscaping should help that look a lot better too.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, parking for financial institutions and restaurants and how this is different than that, right?
And how short is the parking?
I'm on that.
Yeah, how short is the parking?
That's what I'm talking about, exactly, so for those uses.
Shall we have the applicant come up and talk to us a bit about them?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, we'd like to have the applicant come up and state your name.
Hi, I'm Gina Lenzodo, I don't know if you can hear me okay? There we go. Thank you.
Tell us about your idea and why it's a good idea and how you envision your business being located at this spot and how it will affect the area.
I appreciate the question, John, we're often asked, we have two locations currently up in Salt Lake City and my business partner and I, Kenzie Packard, we started with Roots Coffee in 2020, downtown Salt Lake, renovated the building, made it look nice and pretty in a neighborhood that nobody wanted to be a part of, and we made a splash with our success at that neighborhood. We were able to expand into a second location in the Sugar House location and we did the exact same thing, so we took an old building that nobody wanted to go into, cleaned up the area and made a splash there and we've been the best coffee shop in the state of Utah for the past four years and this is our hometown, we wanna be able to make a splash here, we wanna, we wanna come home. So for us, we wanna share what we have in the communities that we have already been a part of in the Salt Lake County area. And I just, again, wanna state the fact that we've been looking at this property even before it was purchased, as soon as the bank put it up for sale, we attempted to purchase the property, however, we come to find out that the Sheens have also had an eye on the property for a long time. And after much convincing the Sheens and getting in their ear about coming to Spanish Fork to put a coffee shop here and share what we have done in the Salt Lake community with our initiatives as well as our donating to the community and the high schools, we wanted to do that here for our hometown, we're happy to do it where we've been, but this is our hometown, so we wanna come home and be able to provide that community sense through a coffee shop, so.
Before we get into Shawna's questions and stuff, I'd like to know, do you have any plans to do something different with the outside? Are you planning on upgrading anything on the outside?
Are you speaking more specifically towards the exterior of the building? 100%. I wish I had pictures of, I should have brought pictures, or at least we could have included them in the presentations for the buildings that we have gone into at Salt Lake locations, they just, yeah, they look like they were falling apart and we definitely put a lot of work into making them look nice, very nice.
Shawna, would you like to reiterate?
Yes ma'am.
Yes, tell us about people coming in and just the inside, what that'll be like?
So, great question, the inside is about 1,800 square feet. We plan to take up a good portion of that, so based on kind of replicating what we've done at our previous locations, the occupancy would be enough for about 20 to 30 people comfortably. Here at Spanish Fork, we're probably gonna make that just a bit less, so comfortable for about 15 to 20 people to sit comfortably. But we do plan to have that open for client, or customers to come in and sit down and hang out. If you've walked into Joe's here in town, it'll be just a little bigger as far as the seating goes for customers.
I'm looking at your menu and it has something for everyone here in Spanish Fork.
It sure does.
I'm a hot chocolate fan.
There you go, we make the best one.
Pastries look great.
That's right, we use all locals, so we hope we can find local bakers here and use what we can local.
Okay. Any other questions? Have we answered about everything? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We may ask you some more questions later.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Okay, this is another public hearing and so we'll go into a public hearing now. Come forward if you'd like to speak about this, or to it, and state your name and we will have a three-minute clock that you can talk for three minutes about anything you'd like to regarding this proposal. Do we have anyone that'd like to come forward?
Hello, my name is Christopher Sheen and I am the landowner of this establishment where these two young ladies are looking to come in and I happen to be your guys' neighbor right across the street, right? And so you see that building day in and day out and it's just pretty bland and I've seen what these girls can do and they've convinced me that, you know, it's gonna be a good-looking, welcoming facility and I think that's what it needs and so I'm happy to have them approach me and build a partnership to work together to try to get it to work out.
It's good to have a partnership with a longtime businessman in Spanish Fork.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thanks Chris.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we will close public hearing. Is there any other questions for staff or for the applicant?
I think my comment, just my comment is I appreciate how thoroughly this has been addressed. We had another applicant come forward with a proposal a year or so ago, Dave, is that right? And there were a lot of things that hadn't been addressed that have been addressed now, so, so thank you for how thorough this has been.
I agree. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I feel like I owe maybe Commissioners Carroll and Warnock both answers.
Great, let's have those before we...
But I don't need to, if you don't...
We'd love to.
Okay, so they're proposing 10 parking spaces with an 18 or 12 square foot building, freestanding, we would call this a restaurant, they'd be required to provide 18. And the previous use, being a financial institution, we would have required that used to provide seven. So typically restaurants park pretty heavily, hence the requirement. And I'm not sure, Commissioner Carroll, if that answers your question or not?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will ask the applicant to respond to that a little bit. You mentioned Joe's here in Spanish Fork, they have a bit of a menu, I don't think it's as extensive as yours. How many, how many patrons can they accommodate? Because I don't see a lot of parking issues with them, it's mostly drive-up and their lines aren't terribly long, they get through there pretty quickly. So if you'd come up and just address that really quickly?
Oh, just to repeat your question here, you were...
About what would be, Joe's has a little capacity... About what would be, uh, it, uh, Joe's has a little capacity indoor as well.
Correct.
But I don't think it's probably, is it fifteen or not? It's pretty small.
It is pretty small.
Well, so yours will be a little larger.
Little bigger, correct. We won't be taking up as much footprint indoors for operations. We've got it nailed down.
And you said fifteen to twenty people comfortably?
Comfortably, yes, that's correct.
So what I'm looking at that in relationship to parking spaces, I look at that and I don't see much trouble with Joe's because they share that parking lot with quite a few businesses. And there doesn't seem to be a problem with parking there, so, uh, that's why I was asking that.
That's correct. Yeah, I believe Joe's, um, is that it pulled up right now?
That is.
That's.
Yeah. Who put that picture up there?
There you go.
So actually, Spanish Fork City acquired the property to the east of Joe's four or five years ago, give or take. Uh, we maintain that space, uh, as was mentioned, that's, that's open for
Oh, that's great to know.
the public in general to, to use for parking. Um, but Joe's itself, I don't think has, has maybe any onsite parking, which is consistent with, it's a pretty unique zone that we have. It's our commercial downtown zone. It's the only zoning district that we have in the city that does not have any off-street parking requirements, um, except for residential uses.
Does that zone usually extend one block east and one block west?
About a half a block east and a half a block west, yes.
Okay. This is just outside of that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I feel comfortable with the parking situation because of all the on-street parking, especially along Center Street, so it's not in front of anyone's home.
Yes, I agree. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we, that the Planning Commission recommend the Roots Coffee Zone change from CO to C2 with the development enhancement overlay to the City Council.
Recommends for approval?
For approval.
I thought you were going there.
Contingent on the findings.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 That motion passes. We'll go to our next item on our agenda, which is item number five, a preliminary plat for Sunset Village Amendment.
Sunset Village is a project that's been before the Planning Commission City Council a handful of times, going back quite a few years now. Uh, construction hasn't started on anything, um, on the property yet. There have been a number of different project plans approved for a development here. The most recently approved plan was, was primarily a twin home project, uh, designed kind of for main floor living, uh, perhaps to hit like a, maybe a fifty-five and older type of, of target market. What's proposed tonight is a change from that plan to a plan that would allow for the site to be developed with townhomes. Incidentally, the subject property is on the, uh, the north side of nine hundred North, right next to I fifteen. If you've been on Ninth North heading, heading west, um, you, you tee into Third West, uh, before Third West goes under I fifteen. This is the, the property that's just off to the right if you were to be heading west. Kind of behind, uh, what was ShopCo, now it's The Hive and so forth.
You're failing to mention a fine Spanish Fork establishment, Casa Salsa.
You're a fan. Gotcha.
Yeah, huge landmark right there, so.
Thank you. Hopefully that helps. Any questions about what we're talking about, where it's at?
I think we have.
It's not a particularly large site, um, and, you know, maybe just comment that triangles are kind of tricky sites to design for. And, you know, this site, it's a little bit off the beaten path, um, not necessarily adjacent to what oftentimes are great neighbors, man, interstate. Uh, in this case, the freeway is elevated considerably above the grade of the subject property. Again, um, it's adjacent to what was the backside of a, a retail establishment. Does happen to be next to a restaurant.
What's the grade difference? How much higher?
Anybody else want to guess? Twenty feet, I mean, if, if not more.
Okay. Cars won't be able to look down on them. I mean, there's a, you know, there's a wall on I fifteen, right?
There is, yeah, so you can't see.
What's the setback from I fifteen to the residences?
Um, as proposed, from, uh,
The edge of I fifteen to the first resident structure. Do we know?
And you're talking about?
You were probably going to tell me I should have waited.
I was not, but now I will. Excuse me. Um, from the property line or the freeway itself?
The, the, let's say, we could say freeway.
Can you help with that? Boy, yeah, something, wow.
Dave, here's John's water.
Again, I apologize. So Byron, you can give us kind of a measurement from the freeway. The setback that we would require from the property line is pretty insignificant. I think five feet is what's designed into the project to the property line. And the property line in this case is beyond the toe of the slope for the freeway. Um, so it's a considerable distance from the travel lanes, you know, given that there is the slope. Then you've got the wall and then you have the freeway.
How far would the wall be from the back of the residences?
We'll be able to give pretty good.
Sixty-seven feet? That's not the wall, though. That's the traveling. At least it's an off-ramp. It's still better.
Yeah, I've been on the site many times and it, it's not necessarily loud there. Sound doing what it does.
Pretty close, sixty-two point, sixty-two point, sixty-two.
And, and whoever moves there, they probably will notice I fifteen. So they'll know that's there at the time they move there. So that's good.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you, you would think. We do get calls from people that move to homes next to railroad tracks and then ask about the trains.
This is at least the third proposal for this site.
You're right. In fact, yeah, there have been more, but, um, what's proposed are townhomes. Uh, that's the change from what had been previously approved. Uh, I do appreciate different things that the applicant's done. Byron, if you can, so this is the layout. Uh, I won't spend a lot of time on that unless you'd like to. I'd kind of like to focus maybe more on the building elevations of what's proposed. So townhomes, single car garage, so you'd have parking space in the garage, one in the driveway. There's guest parking provided elsewhere on the site. We do appreciate that on elevations that are street-facing, the applicant has upgraded those. If you can go to the next slide. So you can see different things that have been added, wainscot, pop-out windows and so forth.
Is that hardy board?
It would have to be, yeah, as a master plan development. In fact, here, I think it's a, it's a combination of kind of a board and batten look, uh, along with the lap sighting kind of look of, uh, some kind of hardy board type product. But, um, as staff, we view this as a relatively minor change from what had been previously approved. So our suggestion is that tonight with the, basically the Planning Commission's consent, if, if you, uh, take action to approve this as an amendment, um, to the, the preliminary plat and the applicant to be able to move forward with final plat approval as their next step and proceed to construct.
Were the approving body in this case, even though it's an MPD underlying with an amendment?
Uh, we're taking the position that, um, as an amendment to what had previously been approved, with you being the Land Use Authority on preliminary plats, that yes, you are.
I won't let it go to our head.
We'll talk about some Title fifteen changes later that will maybe keep it from going to your head, so.
So this is forty units. How many units did we approve before?
It was, I believe, the same, and I might ask, was it identical, Brandon?
Yeah, I think we're a few more units.
Is it? I'll double check that real quick.
Yeah, let's double check that. Few can be, depending on who you are, it's three to six. Several could be five to seven.
I thought it was the same, but let me check.
Is this an HOA? How's the parking going to be managed with so many units close together right there?
Is it, yeah. And is it a for-sale product or?
Yeah.
It's for sale?
And it is, there is an HOA. And there's a parking that's been addressed with the garage as the driveways and.
Oh, yeah, we, we have to have you come.
Come up?
Can't avoid it. He's stuck, so.
State your name and.
Brandon Kirk. I've been working on this for, forever. I'm going, actually going for a record on how many times we can just keep doing the same project.
Oh, you're going to come back a bunch more then?
No, this is it. Um, it's, so, so yes, it is an HOA. And then the, the, the parking has been addressed with the garages, the driveways and, and visitor parking. Did you have any other questions? Sorry.
I think you just said it.
Okay.
I guess, yeah, with, if they've got CC and ours and then they've got rules about their parking and
Yeah, yeah.
how they can manage that.
Yep, and then we did do, um, we're doing like, for things like garbages, won't be like a, a, a community, um, garbage can because they just end up getting everybody's junk and turn it into a mess. And so there'll be garbage cans and things like that. So we've tried to address it to, to keep it a clean subdivision. And a good neighbor for Casa Salsa.
Was it for-sale product? I couldn't.
It's for sale, yeah. And they'll, they'll be with the one-car garage and they're a smaller unit, they'll be a, a, um, a nicely built home, but they're, they're going to be on the more affordable side.
How many bedrooms?
Uh, it's a, they're mostly three-bedroom homes. And no basements.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff again? Hey, this is not a public hearing, and so I would entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
I move the Planning Commission approves the Sunset Village amended preliminary plat, uh, subject to compliance with staff's findings and conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes.
Two, three? Three difference?
Twenty-three was the last approval, so it's a.
Significant.
Yeah.
That's good. There's a housing shortage, so it's good.
Okay, we will move to, uh, number six on our agenda.
Our easy things are done.
So we'll go to, uh, number six. Uh, A, the Rush Funplex Zone Change.
So we're going to go ahead and talk about, uh, both the zone change, uh, and a preliminary subdivision. So you can see the, the, the property, the, the portion of the property that we're talking about is the northern, roughly northern half of it, where the, the applicant is, is proposing, uh, a preliminary subdivision to split this property into two lots or one lot that's highlighted in yellow and the, the remainder parcel, uh, that's yet to be designed as far as, um, how, how it'll be developed, uh, likely into a residential-type product. I can move to the next slide. So it's currently in the RR, uh, zone with an urban density general plan designation. Um, in case anyone wasn't aware, this is the site of the old Sugar Beet Factory, that will be, uh, removed as part of the, the development of the site. It's also located just south of where, uh, the future I fifteen interchange, um, all on Center Street will be coming in the future. So it, uh, opens it up to, uh, a good potential for this location. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So this is the subdivision. You can see the, the shape of the, the property to the north that will be part of this commercial lot where, uh, a Rush Funplex, uh, family entertainment, uh, complex will be located. If you go to the next slide, they've shown us this concept plan, not, uh, not finalized by any means, but just to show the potential location for the larger building right here. They're also showing a potential, uh, pad for, uh, with a drive-through for a restaurant with parking in between and a new road that would come connect to this stub road and potentially go, uh, west to, to that existing road there to provide some connectivity. Next slide. Um, the applicant submitted, uh, a detailed list that's in, uh, the staff report exhibits, um, explaining kind of their plans for the site and, and the work that they've done to bring it to this point. And so staff is, uh, recommending approval of the proposed zone change for that northern portion of the property and the preliminary subdivision. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Uh, I would love to know where the traffic, if you're coming from, I'd love to know where the traffic flow is going to go through. Is it going to go through the neighborhood? Is it going to come? Like, what's, what's Google Maps going to tell me how to get to the Rush Funplex? Is it going to go through the neighborhood? Is it going to impact the neighborhood?
Well, we can pull it up on the map just to show the greater road network that exists now. So there is currently a road that runs along, uh, the freeway here, uh, along that, that western side of the, the property. So the proposed road would run south here and connect there.
It would, the, the proposed road goes between the neighbors and the business?
Yes, the, yeah, the parking lot. That's, that's the way the concept is shown now.
And then is the proposed road which side of the wall that will be between the two? Like, will there be a wall behind the homes and then the road and then the business, or will it be?
There's an existing wall today.
Yeah.
Okay, and the road's on the.
I do think it's an eight-foot wall, is not?
I don't know if it's eight or six. There's probably somebody here that has, it is eight.
Oh, good.
Um, but the road is.
Take, I believe you.
The road would be on the subject property, so.
Okay.
Beyond that.
Yeah, it's another buffer.
And also, just so it's noted in the minutes, we did receive two emails from residents, uh, from the neighborhood to the, to the east. Uh, one said that they were, uh, in favor of, of development of this site for a commercial use with a question about, uh, site lighting, making sure that lighting in the parking lot wouldn't, uh, interfere with, with the neighborhood and spill over into their backyards. Uh, another email that we received, they just said that they were opposed to it, so.
And we'd like to recognize that, that, uh, we did re- receive those two emails. One from Christine Lemon and one from David Duval. And we really appreciate, uh, all those people reaching out and expressing their, their concerns or their support. Uh, it's something that we overlook sometimes. If you can't make it to the meeting, you know, uh, make your feelings known and, uh, in form of an electronic, uh, way to do it. Either email or, or text, or, you know, come in and talk to some of the members of staff that can help you with that. And, uh, we thank you for your, for the, uh, the concerns of those two people that, that did send these.
If I remember right, is this going to affect the railroad spurges? I know there was one on the other side. Richard, he used to own the property over there. Is this going to affect that at all? Am I crazy?
It'll be removed, won't it?
Yeah, the one servicing the property, in the property will be removed, yeah.
In this property, but it won't affect the other one? Because then they're.
They'll only remove it from this property as it develops.
Okay, I have a list of questions. I'm not sure when, when the right time to ask my questions is.
There should be a representative here with the development group that might be able to answer a lot of those questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this time we'll go ahead and invite the applicant to come forward, state your name, and expound on this a little bit.
Hi, good evening, my name is Justin Polito, I'm with Elk Valley Construction and also the Rush Funplex, so thanks for having me tonight. Tell me what you got.
Okay, how many other Rush Funplexes are in Utah and what kind of, what's their location like? I do know about the University Place Mall, I've been to that one.
Yeah, yeah. This would be our fifth location in Utah with three more planned that we're currently working on, so we have two others that are out of state. We are an all indoor facility, which we've, has been great in the communities that we're in, we, we don't have any noise complaints. As far as light pollution, we can definitely work with that in our parking lot, make sure we're being good neighbors. But yeah, this will be our fifth Utah location currently.
What kind of, are, do you, are your other locations next to neighborhoods like this one in Spanish Fork?
Yes, we have two of our locations that butt upright to residential zoning. They've been great, haven't had any complaints. Like I say, we're a hundred percent indoors, so that's, that's helpful.
What cities are those?
Syracuse and West Jordan.
I'm also wondering, this is the first time I've seen something about a restaurant, a drive-through restaurant on the property, and do you have, is that new, or do you have those? I'm also concerned about the hours, that's a really late opening times?
Yeah, yeah. As far as the restaurant goes, we don't have necessarily a tenant, this is a very preliminary plan. Main purpose tonight is seeking plat and zone change approval, we do have civil engineer ready to, to get moving right away on a final site plan. We're hoping to avoid expense on that till we knew we could get past this, so. As far as the hours go, once again, specifically to our Syracuse location, that's our largest location, our busiest location. And it, it is the one closest to residential zoning. We have not had any problems with our, our hours. We're very sensitive to, like the, the one resident expressed, the, the parking lot lighting. But it's, it's worked out well, we haven't had any problems, so.
Do you have a drive-through restaurant on that, at that location as well?
Yes, we, we own neighboring businesses to the Rush, that there's an iceberg and an Arby's that are in front of our, our Funplex, yes.
And, so, I didn't notice hours on the Rush Funplex, but I noticed on the, the restaurant proposed that it was like midnight and 1:00 AM and such, that, is that the same hours as the Rush Funplex?
No, the Rush Funplex is, is till 10:00 PM, weekdays, Friday, Saturday till midnight. Once again, with the restaurant pad, we don't necessarily have a tenant, you know, secured there, so hours of operation there would, would vary depending on a tenant, so.
Any other, I, I have one question.
Yes.
You're there, maybe staff can help as well. We have regulations on lighting now, don't we, on what type and down-facing lighting and stuff like that?
Yeah, so if the proposal that's before you tonight ultimately gets approved, the applicant's next step would be to submit for site plan approval and a final plat approval as well, but with the site plan review, they're required to provide detail on everything that will be constructed on the site. Part of that is a lighting plan that they would provide. Part of the lighting plan is a photometric plan which identifies how much lighting there would be throughout the site, and we would expect there to be close to zero, if not zero, light spill over onto the properties to the east. And that's really frankly pretty easy to achieve, shielding and different types of lighting and that sort of thing, so I think it was Mr. Duval that made that, that offered that comment with his email.
Yes, that was his concern, in his email was the lighting, Mr. Duval.
That's, that's a very common concern. Lighting and noise, those are the two things, and lighting's pretty easy to deal with.
I think one question that we had previously when we were talking about this is
the traffic flow to this from Spanish Fork Main Street and other ways. And this is a state highway that goes there, it's first south, it turns in, you know, turns into Leland and then continues. And so they're, they're pretty significant artery roads in Spanish Fork. So that should not be much of a problem, is, is that?
Well, and I'll maybe just add as well that, you know, this isn't gonna happen next year, probably even for five or more years, but one of the things that I think to help make staff and ultimately the city council comfortable with the idea that some pretty intense land uses potentially makes sense here, you know, right now's own, or sorry, designated urban density residential on the general plan, for example, is the idea that eventually there's gonna be access to I-15 at approximately Center Street with a new interchange and some other things as well that will really enhance at some point in the future, access to the immediate area. I do think the state road that's kind of to the, kind of along the northern boundary, certainly along the western boundary of the site as well, that's gonna become much more of a prominent route for traffic that'll come into Spanish Fork from communities to the south. Talking, you know, in future decades, probably more so than future years. I'll let the applicant speak maybe to access and how that impacts their feeling about the commercial use being viable here, but certainly that's, that's part of the, the need.
One more question is, is that the zoning of the property now is RR, is that right? However, it's never been used as RR since the, since the Sugar Factory was there, it has been in industrial use. And only changed after that was going to be abandoned. And so it's never been, you know, at least in the last century, the last hundred years, it has not been agricultural ground. It's been a, a industrial use.
Yes, and industrial zoning was assigned to the property until, I wanna say 2021.
When they began.
When the city initiated a number of zone changes in the area and throughout the city, where we were wanting to remove industrial zoning, where it was either no longer necessary, you know, zoning that was frankly, say obsolete, given land use changes that had happened in the area and the like. And at that point in time, change of the zoning really improved the city's position by way of being able to, to review a proposal like this and to have some latitude as to, to what could be allowed.
I just thought, because it is part of the proposal, that it should be mentioned that it never has been a farm, so to speak, at least as long as the Sugar Factory owned that, you and I, Sugar. Okay, any other questions or comments for the applicant or staff? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
We will go into public hearing on this. Again, we'll invite all who would like to be heard on this subject, come forward and give us your comments. You'll have three minutes to make that, those comments, and we would welcome anybody that would like to come forward at this time to do so.
Hello, my name is Kevin Schwor. I mean, I, I am a resident of the neighborhood just to the east of this proposed property. Looking at these changes, my largest concern that I have is that connecting road into 450 South into the neighborhood. Because like, we, we've got the state road, that's got, gonna have plenty of traffic, but having a, a new accessway into that residential for increased traffic, especially when most of those homes are starter homes, young children, out, that just wanna play in the roads, is that gonna make my neighborhood unsafe for my kids?
Great, thank you.
My name is Mark Smith. I live in the property directly on the other side of the brick wall, so I've been in Spanish Fork for twenty-three years now, we spent fifteen years in our home there. We've watched all sorts of things happen on that property, with wasatch pallet and whatever other things they do with all the dirt and ruckus that they make. We've had lots of issues over the years with large equipment being run at nighttime, having to call the police for noise violations. Light hasn't been an issue because typically, they just have a couple lights that light up the back property. We have a two-story home, most of the houses on the street are two stories. My concern is the light pollution spilling over. I know you guys mentioned it can be controlled a lot, but with a two-story home, the backside of our property, of our home is all bedrooms, so.
It's all what? Say that again?
It are bedrooms.
Okay, got it.
So, you know, if they're gonna be open late, if the restaurant's gonna be open, we're gonna have a lot of light shining in all hours of the night, that, that concerns me. My biggest concern is the road right on the other side of the property. Why do we need to have a road on that part of the property rather than having 450 go all the way to the state road? Or having another entrance, have, have them come in from the other sides rather than a, a road going right at the back of the property? So is that something they're willing to look at and consider as well? I don't like the idea of having heavy traffic, as heavy as it would be going to a fun center right behind my property, when we're trying to enjoy time in our backyard or in our home. So those are my two main concerns, and with the hours of the proposed restaurant being open so late, I know teenagers and other kids get rowdy and loud at night, I was one of them. But I know there was people like me that complained about that, I'm sure, too. But those are things I have. We've got, I guess I'm gonna speak for some of my neighbors that aren't here, but that's definitely a concern that we're seeing.
Thank you.
I'm Liz Tebow, I also live just on the other side of this property, behind the brick wall. And my number one concern is also this road connecting into our neighborhood, I just drove down it tonight. There was a child that was very difficult to see, even with the city's lighting, this is a very dark neighborhood at night. We have many, many young children, the Spanish Fields neighborhood was built with young families in mind. This is full of children. If you ever come into one of our church buildings, you'll see what I mean. We love it though, we love being here. We already have a lot of extra traffic from that frisbee golf thing you guys did. Tons of extra traffic from that, they are not as aware of the children, they do speed. It's not that parents are letting their children run amok, it's just that I know my young child was on a skateboard one day and accidentally gone in the middle of the road, it was a close call. And I know those things happen. He's okay, but it was, it was close enough. So my number one concern is that road. I'm very grateful to see that so much was thought about, that light pollution is being considered. I also have a lot of the same concerns as my neighbor Mark with noise and those things, but I think I can deal with those things. My number one concern is this road, and I absolutely oppose a road connecting into our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, it's my turn. My name is Christy Wettin, I live across the street and like, on that corner, so where the road would come into our neighborhood, that like, is almost the star of my property right there. I really don't like the idea of a road there. We already hear people speeding around from the frisbee golf course and doing donuts in the parking lot at 11:00 PM at night. So, and then speeding off down the road, like, I wake up to cars speeding down the road from the frisbee golf course. So I really don't like the idea of teenagers going into that parking lot and then speeding off. And then in general, I am just against rezoning for the commercial use because the city did not, the city and the police department did not protect the well-being of the citizens when it came to the wasatch pallet factory. We had so many noise issues with the pallet factory and especially the pallet grinder. And it would turn on at 7:00 AM, we would wake up to the sound of the grinder, and we called the police at least two times, and a police officer would come and measure the noise, and it was in violation of the city ordinance. And the police officer was just like, what do you want us to do? It's their business, we can't ask them to turn it off. And so for the three years that that pallet factory was there while I lived there, we just had to put up with it because the police didn't wanna do anything about it. Maybe the wasatch pallet factory paid a fine, but they didn't ever stop with their noise. So that was extremely frustrating for a neighborhood where we would wake up to the sound of the pallet factory, and we could not even have conversations in our own backyard because it was too loud. I would have to yell at my kids ten feet away from me when the pallet grinder was on. So I really don't want more commercial use here because I just don't trust that if there is a problem, it will ever be resolved where the neighbors are happy with that.
Thank you.
Name's Matt Tebow, my wife was up earlier. We share the wall. My wife voiced most of the concerns about the new thing, the, the questions I have and some of the concerns I have is actually with the demolition of what is there, of how those buildings are gonna be demolished, especially the, I don't know, hundred fifty-foot smoke stack that's there. How is, how are you gonna protect our homes that butt upright against? I had a good friend working in Provo at the rec center when they destroyed the smoke stacks in the Provo City Utility there. And he said, half of the windows on the rec center got smashed up from the, the concussion wave that came when they knocked down those towers. And so taking concern into how those buildings are destroyed, plus with all the asbestos, most likely, since it was built in the early nineteen hundreds, and then definitely the bats and other things that live in those towers. And, and just the concern of keeping that clean and not having all of that gunk during the demolition get brought into our homes, since we already had to deal with all the sawdust and dust that, through the, the years with the, the pallet factory there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jackie Larson. I am the Political Relations and Logistics Director from Ross Landscaping and American Custom Metals and Fab, that's the shop north of this. So I'm curious on how much of that rail trackage will be removed? And I'm concerned that it's gonna, that removing it will interfere with our railcar movements to our property. And I'm confused about the roads proposed, I don't think it coincides with UDOT's interchange concept. The Larsons and Lewis's wanted me to ask about the 1550 West also. That was brought up during the last like, TMP big change that they were doing, that it was gonna be removed and realigned. Is that gonna change at all? And then is there adequate parking? Thanks.
Thanks, Jackie. Anyone else that would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, we'll go out of public hearing. We have a number of issues there that we need to discuss as part of this meeting. And we'll try to get the answers from both staff and the applicant possibly. There's a lot of concern about the traffic, the positioning of the roads. That seems to be the main issue here with the neighbors. Would we like to discuss that in any detail?
To me, having a road behind that wall is
To me, having a road behind that wall is actually a buffer, but maybe I'm wrong.
I actually was confused by the comments as well, only 'cause I, I also saw the road with these accesses here that are gonna spill people into where they're going, into the commercial from here. I, I don't anticipate, and I could be wrong, I'm open to being wrong. I don't anticipate a lot of the patrons for these two businesses coming through the residences, through this subdivision. I do think they're gonna come this way or this way. And I, I saw this as a, a positive for the residences, but the residences don't see it that way. And they're the ones who live there, which is, really, I'm thinking a lot about it 'cause it's interesting. I, I wouldn't want a parking lot abutting my backyard. I think the road's a great thing, but I, I don't know.
The road that comes straight west from the neighborhood, there's been that stub there with the anticipation that there would be a road that would come through there from the very beginning. That was part of the plat, plan for that neighborhood. And that will not be adjacent to this proposed building. That will be through the, through the residential neighborhood that will be built later.
Right through here?
Yes. If I'm not, is that, is that correct?
Yeah. But the point being that it connects through here. But still, there's, anyone who comes through here and going through here, they'll turn in here, they'll turn in here, or they'll come in this way to the business, they're gonna turn in there. That's the most direct route, if they go that far.
I'd love to hear a little bit about demolition and containing contaminants. What are the, our regulations?
It's a good concern.
That's, that's something that...
It's a good concern. It's just, it should be addressed.
Regulations on removing a really massive smokestack and how that happens and that sort of a thing?
Lot of regulations for that.
I'm curious as well. And, yeah, we don't, we don't have zoning provisions, for example, that detail how that would happen, regardless of how the property ends up being used. If, if there's the kind of changes that we expect coming, that's gonna have to be taken care of. I don't know what all that entails. I don't think necessarily any of us on staff do.
There's no, like, federal, state, city regulations?
There are new state regulations.
They're above heavily regulated.
We are equipped to, to plan for, test for, administer by way of standards and that sort of a thing.
But they are required to hold to the state and federal regulations for containing their contaminants?
Well, in, when we talk about contaminants, that, that's something that I can speak to and maybe we're talking about different things.
I'm talking about stuff blowing into their yards.
Okay, so when, is there, let me talk to this. The previous uses of the property have left things there that need to be removed. So, on that issue, aside from demolition, there are procedures that'll have to be followed to clean up the site. What we're looking at tonight is a proposal to develop the site commercially. Probably in future months, you'll see a proposal to develop the remainder of the site to the south residentially. So, in terms of cleanup of what's been there historically, there are things that will have to be followed. The applicants have done, and they've worked, well, the property owner has worked with city consultants for a number of years to understand what would be required before the site can be put to a new use. So, there's that part of it relative to demolition. Byron, looks like maybe you have some insight.
Just saying, as like any demo permit, they'll get in and do some testing, and then it will be reviewed by the state. And then, if there is something found, the state will have different options of how they can mitigate that, so...
And I'm not gonna claim to be an expert, but I just had to file for demo permit. My goodness. It, uh, there's a lot that goes into it, federal and state. Like, it's, we're months before, and this is just a home, and we had to have asbestos moved. It's, they're, they're particular, so...
I, I appreciate the, I appreciate the applicant coming and saying that they want to be a good neighbor. And, and I, I hope if this, if we approve this, if city council approves it, approve this, that you will prove to be a good neighbor 'cause there's a lot of people that don't trust, that, that don't trust. And, and I hope that we can and have access, and that neighbors would have access to, to, to you or whoever they need to, to be a great neighbor. Okay, my... I just have a comment. I'm still, I'm still kinda twirled up about the, about the, can I just say, the Funplex, I really appreciate that you are a self-contained unit, that you want to do what you can to mitigate lighting, however you do that with trees or, or whatever. But I'm still twirled up about that, the restaurant pad. I just think that I can see, like, the benefits. If I go with my family, I'm there for the day. I wanna have lunch. We run over and get some lunch. But the Funplexes that I've been to, the one that I've been to, has a snack bar. And so, I just feel like the neighbors might be a little happier if they know everything's contained in one building. So, I don't support having an extra little restaurant right there, especially, anyway, that's just me. And like, I, this reminds me a little bit of the trampoline place that they, that's in Provo that abuts the freeway there. And I've dropped off, I dropped off my kids tons of times and went through those neighborhoods. And probably part of the time I was not thinking about all of the neighbors' houses that I was driving quickly by. So, I'm glad to see that there is a good access that doesn't go through the neighborhood. And I understand that we have to have connectivity through the neighborhoods because there's gonna be another neighborhood right there, just to the south. But I just think, what, so, thinking about my kids and picking them up when they were done at the trampoline place, they waited inside of the trampoline place, you know, but I could see if there was a restaurant there, they're like, could be wandering the parking lot and, you know, causing all kinds of ruckus. But that's just me and my ruckus raising kids. But, anyway, I support everything except for the, the restaurant. I don't know, Joseph, I wanna hear what your guys' thoughts are on that, though. Actually, I'm the only one twirled up about it.
Any of the patrons of the restaurant, so, let's, let's just think about this. They're gonna come this way or this way, and maybe a few percent will come through here. But their headlights are gonna come into the center, and their headlights are now gonna point this way and then this way. And then, they're gonna go out on a dedicated road that it actually does not have access to the residences. Ninety-seven percent of the time, they're not gonna even pass by a house. Are you still opposed to it?
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
Kinda, it's, it just feels like a loitering place to me. But I, I don't know, is there, maybe I'm wrong.
And it's right next to I-15. What, what else is gonna go right next to I-15?
I think it's a nice complement to the Funplex.
I, I do see that positive part of it.
I think it's designed well. I'm, I'm still surprised the residences are, the residents are against the road 'cause I see that as a real positive for the, the subdivision.
I agree with Joseph on that. That is actually an attempt to try and buffer the neighborhood. And I think it does a good job by directing that traffic north and south rather than east and west, like you say. And the fence that's there now will help with the, with the lights that go that way. The lighting from the parking lot will be less onerous because of that street. That gives you a little bit of a buffer. So, I'm, I'm in favor of the road. I think it's a better buffer than just butting up against the fence. I think it's a good way to direct traffic. And, you know, I, I've had family members live in that subdivision. And so, I've driven through there quite a bit, and I agree, boy, there's a lot of, lot of kids. And there always will be because of the nature of that subdivision, that development. And rather than drive that and have to worry about that, if I was going to go here, I surely wouldn't go through the neighborhood to get there. When it comes to the concerns, and I, and I am, I'm very aware of your concerns about the, the golf disc or disc golf facility that's there and the access to the trail, that's another issue because it's already there. And your concern probably is more that there would be more traffic, more noise and stuff like that. I understand that as well, but I don't know that you're going to see any more traffic through this way. I think that you're probably gonna have people going the way that they are now. And if there are issues there, I think if the, if the police are not, if our law enforcement people are not enforcing the ordinances, you need to get some people together and come in and raise holy hell. You need to come in. You can't, you can't expect to have one, one incident happen and have one officer come out and have everything taken care of. If they refuse to do that, you've got a great mayor, city council, and staff that are here to serve you. And if you've got an issue, their doors are open. Their telephones are available. You can get their numbers and get ahold of them and say, "Hey, you, you've created this, this situation. We need to have it taken care of as a, as a neighborhood." And I appreciate you bringing that up in this meeting because it does bring this up to the attention of the city and to those who are responsible for that. And that's a first step. If it continues, then it needs to be taken care of. I happen to live on a street where it is not, it's not a cul-de-sac, but it's ended because there's another subdivision that will go there. And I was the first house on the street, and ever since, then we've had issues with people that park there, and there are issues all night, and music, and drug deals, and everything else. And as a result, uh, we've, we have regular police presence there now. They come through the neighborhood all the time. It doesn't solve it completely. I don't know how you're gonna keep people completely out. It's a public place. However, it helped. And knowing that the police will come through there at about any time of the day or night, it has helped. And so, we have less problem there than we did when the problem first began. So, I think it's great that you're here. I think it's great that you brought that up, but it's not really part of what we're looking at tonight with this development. Because if nothing's done in the, in the disc golf place, it's not gonna, you know, I don't know if this'll help or hurt, but the problem's there now, and you need to, you need to address that with the city. And, and I, I appreciate that you brought that forward tonight.
Another thought is there the second-story bedrooms or even just the second-story looking out into the, the lighting? That's, that's legitimate. And so...
Yes.
Staff's gonna have to get very thorough with the photometric plan. And there's so many tools, by the way, for lighting for, for that, to solve that issue, but it needs to be solved. I don't know if you'd want the, some of the building lighting to be off because it's great for security and actually keeps some of the riffraff out. It might be a benefit, but, but I think staff's gonna have to get really thorough about downward lighting, potentially automatic turnoff of some, or, or dimming, severe dimming at a certain hour of the night. But that photometric, photometric plan's gonna need to be worked on to accommodate the residences, for sure.
Thank you.
I didn't, I, I don't remember what Jackie's questions were, but they had to do with an impact...
Business to the north?
And the railroad spurs.
Anyway, I didn't remem, I couldn't, I don't know the details, but...
I haven't seen any traffic on that rail spur for a long time, even going into, into the pallet.
It used to service wasatch pallet, but when they moved it, they built a new spur.
A new spur there.
My understanding is private property is a private spur, and so, it's the property owners who own that.
Great, thank you.
It's actually a team track. When it was constructed in nineteen sixty-six, nineteen sixty-seven, when they had to realign the rail for the interchange that came in, it was constructed as a team track for the farm co-op that was there. So, now that it's changed ownership, that still goes, follows them. And even though it's a closed track at the moment, we do have the right to actually call it and request it be opened. We are looking into actually having some of our sprinklers, piping and all that, coming in through via rail versus truck 'cause it's significantly cheaper. So, we do have the trackage to it. The right-of-way easement is owned by somebody else, but we still have rights to that.
Any other discussion or questions for staff or for the applicant? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
There's one more thought I'm having is, and I don't know how much, how in love I am with it, but potentially additional traffic calming measures. Sometimes we'll do like a little median, a little island median where the stub road's connecting just to ensure that people are really slowing down when they turn into this, in or out of the subdivision. That, that happens a lot at legacy farms. Just to get through that.
I like that.
Will you use your light, like, show, share?
Yeah, so, some of these developments now in the city have like a really narrow median, turn in right here and then a walk path across. And it's, it's a traffic calming measure. So, anyone going in or out of that subdivision, by default, are really gonna have to make sure they're going the speed limit. It's just an idea. I, I even thought about maybe some raised speed bumps, but you can actually go a little bit faster. But again, it's a traffic calming measure, but I don't know, I don't know with it being so short, and it's probably gonna be twenty-five miles per hour anyway. And it's, there aren't residences there. I, I just wanna, I'm just, yeah, there you go. I'm just thinking through, at the beginning of the residences, traffic is alerted, "Hey, this is, this is different. This is something other than commercial traffic calming measure." Something like that.
I really like that, and I think that's an item that'll be discussed when there's actually a, the plan of what's going to happen there. Tonight, we're discussing the zoning that'll lead to this.
Subdivision's next.
Right. So, and I think that that's a good, a good item of discussion for that. And I lot, and thank you for bringing that, that to our attention. That shows an example of how those things can be helped. I'd entertain a motion.
So... This is, this is a big change to the city and to the property, and, and we got a landmark there that you guys have seen for a long time. If, if we came to this and we didn't have citizen concerns, I'd be concerned. So, thank you. I, I do wanna tell you, we, we pride ourselves on being good neighbors. Not, not only are we building this project, but we are family-owned. We, we own the facility. As regards to the, in regards to the, the current property, I, I can't speak to as, I, I don't know what kind of safety concerns or transient, or, I mean, I drive by the property, obviously, and familiar with all the broken windows, and who knows what's happening in there safety concern-wise for teenagers. But we, we do hope that what we've proposed can be of great value to the community, a nice, safe, family, fun place that's replacing potentially a, a safety hazard in the city. And hopefully, I don't offend anyone, but maybe a little bit of an eyesore. So, anyways, I, I appreciate the concern. I don't want citizens to feel like their, their voices weren't heard. And, and we pride ourselves on, on being great neighbors. We're, we're family-built and owned, so, thank you.
A little side note to that, there is a similar smokestack in Lehigh where there was a, a previous sugar factory owned by you and I Sugar as well. And I don't know why they've decided to keep it there, but there are a lot of antennas and stuff that are on it now. I can't imagine that it's safe to leave it there, but it's still standing. And I've wondered about that here, but I think that the, I think that the, the condition of that smokestack as such has got to come down.
I guess this wouldn't be Spanish Fork if we didn't ask, "Does the parking match what we need to have there?"
I thought you were gonna talk about a roundabout when you used...
Yeah, we're gonna put a roundabout in the middle of the parking lot. But I, I know parking's a big issue.
You could do that as traffic calming, about right into there.
But if they start spilling over into the neighborhoods, that could be really bad, so...
There you go. And again, right now, the issue that we are asking for a vote on now is, is this zone change. And again, right now the issue that we are asking for a vote on now uh, is uh, is this uh, zone change.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am.
All right. I move that the proposed zone change from RR to C2 be recommended for approval based on the included staff findings.
Second.
I have uh, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that passes. We'll continue now to item B, which is the second part of this issue, which is the Rush Funplex subdivision. And this also will be a public hearing. Who is going to address that, Dave?
And I think Mr. Mann largely already talked about the, the issue, which it's really just creating uh, the separate lot that would be zoned commercial and the road having that set up for dedication, so. I don't mean to speak for ya, not much to add, no.
So, we have pretty well uh, discussed that through the previous uh, issue. Is there anything uh, that we have not discussed that needs to be uh, brought before the commission at this time? Be, before we go forward with this? This is the preliminary plat.
This is the preliminary plat? So we have talked about all, about that, but I'm gonna be voting against it because I'm not for the restaurant. Other than that, I, I support the rest of the plat.
So you're gonna throw the baby out with the bathwater?
No, cuz you'll all pass it. It's fine.
On principle.
But I'm just, I just want it noted that that's what I'm concerned about. That's all.
That's great.
Can we add the traffic calming measure at this point?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Now's the time to discuss.
With the subdivision?
Well?
Dave?
Dave?
That we would recommend.
Or is that going to be part of?
Just the, just that median and the stub road connection.
Yes, one thing that I need to mention and to maybe comment on that first, absolutely, yeah. Making that a, um, a condition of approval, and I could think of a lot of different ways to phrase it. You know, that uh, you know, maybe subject to um, the city engineers review, appropriate steps be taken to, to calm traffic between this site and the adjacent neighborhood to the east.
And I'm talking specifically at the stub road.
Specifically at four fifty south.
Yeah, I'm not.
Into the neighbors.
Do more along the north-south corridor of the commercials center personally?
That was what I understood. I think, yeah, by all means.
We're on the same page.
Yeah, and I, I just noticed this, but uh, this is a standard subdivision. The planning commission is the land use authority on preliminary plats, so you're not being asked to make a recommendation tonight. You'd be either moving to approve or deny or, you know, maybe continue the preliminary plat.
Okay. Uh, before we talk too much more about that, we'll invite the uh, applicant to come forward if he'd like to make any more comments than what we have already. If not, we're okay. I think we've pretty well covered it. Uh, is, so do we have any questions or concerns about uh, this proposal?
Is it, is the subdivision?
It's the preliminary plat.
Is this a public hearing too?
Yes, this is a public, it will be.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
So before I go into the public hearing, I'd just like to know if there's any further discussion before we go into public hearing.
I think I'm in favor of the traffic calming measure that I mentioned, but I'm curious if the residents are in favor of it.
Okay. Why don't we go, okay, we're going into public hearing. We're in public hearing at this time. Again, we will open up the discussion to anyone that would like to come and make any new comments that we haven't heard. If there's other things that we need to discuss at this time, now's the time to do it. We'll have the three-minute rule again. State your name and we will go forward.
Hi, again. Now switching gears to farming. Um, my family owns a property along fifteen fifty west, that's, or fifteen hundred west south of this where the other main road is going to be. Um, where that's, I guess, suggested to be widened. I have zero plans of ever leaving, so that's gonna bottleneck right there if that is going to cause a significant safety hazard. If this is approved, then causing an issue for us and everything right there. Um, other thing with the alignment of that interchange, I'm a stakeholder in the UDOT working group for that interchange. That alignment doesn't coincide with what UDOT's suggesting. So where's that road going to? Is it going to go up to um, the neighbors on the other side or what's going with that, so?
Which road specifically?
Fifteen fifty. So the one on the west. Um, when it was suggested a few months back, it was saying that that was gonna be removed and jog over I fifteen. And Kara Lewis came in, she was very concerned about it because it would be going over her house. Then that was taken out. So where it curves right there goes south. The other map that showed like the faint colored lines had that kind of being part of the interchange. Cause that's UDOT's property, actually the triangle to the left right there. I don't think that that's what they plan on doing. Does that make sense? So if you pull up the last picture that you had, um, right there, so on the bottom part where like you can see all the lines of the.
Oh, yeah.
So that is UDOT's property. That doesn't coincide with what the concept is that they're moving forward with at the moment. Thanks.
Thanks, Jackie. Anyone else?
I'm Liz Tebow. I very much appreciate all of the things that you guys think about. It's wonderful to see you at work. I do agree with Joseph, the road behind my house, I've had a road behind my house before. It actually was fine. Um, my main concern is still the traffic connecting into our neighborhood from that road. I very much appreciate the thoughts on um, the, I can't remember what you called it.
Median.
The me- it's just a median, okay. Um, just to deter people from going into the neighborhood. I very, very much appreciate, appreciate those thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is John Sumption and it's just happenstance that I'm here. I used to live in Syracuse, right where, right across um, the, on the other side of Walmart from where your Rush Funplex is. And I looked up the plan and I see that Rush Funplex is a building that itself is a buffer between the commercial stuff that's on the main road and the neighborhood. And if the, if you were to put the building as a buffer between the neighborhood and I fifteen, that might be a benefit to the neighbors that hadn't been discussed. I'm not, I'm not gonna propose it or talk about it anymore. I just wanted to raise it while people were on it.
Thank you. Any others?
Uh, Kevin Schor, um, sorry, hopefully we're talking about the, uh, I'm still on topic. Um, but I'm, I'm curious kind of what uh, numbers is for, for parking and if the parking is gonna be adequate uh, with this proposal. Uh, because if, if not, the closest parking would be through the neighborhood and into that disc golf parking lot. And um, like I, I would just be really cautious about any sort of uh, expected parking or traffic spill over from putting a, a commercial building there with, with that road connection into the residential.
Very good. Thanks.
One more thought just now, rail spur situation. Would it be helpful for me to point out to you and explain the movements and why we actually need that to remain in place for us to navigate to it? Cause if it's removed right here, that interferes with us.
Well, I, I don't think it is because it's not yet been determined. We're talking about something that is still in flux.
Isn't this though, if that's approved, wouldn't that overlay the rail spur? And so it'd have to be removed, so?
Uh.
Would this be the?
I haven't seen anything that would put that through that property. And that's what I'm saying is that it's not.
Is one that the consultant, when they actually came through, it is supposed to be removed all the way up through past us. But even now, we would have to have that remain through most, like the, well, not all of the spurs because there's a couple of them that branch out that are only to Wasatch Pallet's property. The other one that is the main spur that comes up through us, we have to cross over one hundred south to shift the rail car to go back over through our spur. So we would still need the movements to actually be adequate to go through here, is all.
I think we'll have to cross that bridge when, when it, when we come to it. We don't have that proposal anywhere on paper that's been presented.
So that wouldn't be indulged with this?
This prop- the owner of this property has the right to develop and put whatever they want there. If it comes to a point that something has to be done, it'll have to be negotiated with that property owner at the time that uh, it comes.
What if it's?
Unless you want to, you know, you, you would have to obtain the right-of-way at the very least and if not, establish the, the railway, which isn't even a, a for sure deal.
Okay.
I would say that that's a long shot as a matter of fact to get a rail, a rail.
I mean, to be quite honest, I personally think that that should be more of a UDOT situation where UDOT's still in the concept plan of that. I think it's premature to go for, move forward with this until we know that that's resolved.
Oh, I don't.
And like quite frankly, I'm not trying to hold this up for the rail spur. If you wanna cut me a dang check and rip the dang thing out, I'm perfectly fine with that. I just feel like that needs to be addressed first and actually make sure that that's okay before we take that away from us as well.
Well noted. Thanks. Anyone else? Seeing none, no one else, we will uh, go out of public hearing and uh, try to address the issues that have been brought up uh, that uh, that we need to address.
I'm actually ready for a motion, but I'll wait for any discussion. I'll just be patient.
Is there any discussion?
Since you are at, since you wanna add the traffic calming thing, I think you should make the motion.
I'm happy to do that, if you guys are ready. All right.
I would entertain a motion.
I move the planning commission approves the Rush Funplex preliminary plat subject to staff's findings and conditions with the additional condition of approval of a traffic, traffic calming measure such as a median island at the stub road connection to the residences on the east.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Very good. We have four in favor and one against. Motion passes.
I'm gonna recuse myself for this one.
Yes.
The Meller.
Okay, next on the agenda is C, item C in six, uh, the Meller zone change. This will also be a uh, public hearing.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the subject property in this case is on the south side of four hundred north, just a little bit west of the intersection of four hundred north and Spanish Fork Parkway. It's on a really large site, just over five acres. Um, few different parts to what's proposed, like with the previous applications that were talked about with the Rush Funplex, there is a proposed zone change. That has two parts in this case. One part is to change the zoning to R one twelve. Um, the other part is to have the master plan development overlay uh, be a part of that approval. Um, which would then uh, make way for the commission to make a recommendation on a proposed preliminary plat uh, that'd be approved as a master plan development. I, there's not really much unique to mention about the proposal here. The R one twelve zone is what's been used pretty much exclusively in the vicinity of the subject property. It's consistent with the um, low-density residential general plan designation that's been in place for quite some time uh, in this area. The applicant has worked with staff to come up with a design that we think um, can work even though there are some challenges uh, by way of the existing street network that exists in the neighborhood. Um, some things that make accessing this property a bit of a challenge, some things that might make providing the kind of access that'd be ideal for development to the east of this, um, a little bit of a challenge as well. Uh, as proposed, there are thirteen different lots included in the project. Um, the subject property to the west is also undeveloped and we've reviewed but have not yet approved development plans for that site. And uh, the only other thing I think that might be worth mentioning is that uh, seeing things from this perspective and, you know, really uh, just a dimension. Um, it's hard to get a good feel for the topography that exists today and what will exist going forward. I don't know if anybody by chance has ever been in the subdivision that's just south of this, particularly the, the part that is closest to Spanish Fork Parkway. Um, had you been, you can get a good sense for what would need to happen in order to be able to provide sewer surface to this property, which is to raise the property considerably. Um, that creates some challenges. Uh, for example, the prospective development in the future of the properties that exist between this one and Spanish Fork Parkway to the east. Um, I'm not sure that we as staff have good answers as to how to, how to accommodate that in the future. Um, but uh, as proposed, this indeed is what the development review committee has recommended be approved in the form of the preliminary plat as a master plan development. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I, I'm gonna ask you to do one thing, Dave. One of the comments that I've had from people who have been in these meetings or have watched them online after uh, ask about what zoning designations mean. And the proposed zoning for this is, is that it be R one twelve. Would you just explain for everybody what the zone, R one twelve, means?
I really appreciate you asking that. I think sometimes we use phrases that.
Make it for granted.
We totally take it for granted. I think it's frankly pretty off-putting sometimes when we expect that people just get what the master plan development is or the R one twelve zone, so.
Feel open.
I'll take some of my advice and follow your lead to maybe speak a little bit differently. Um, zoning is a series of laws actually that define what different properties can be used for. In this case, we're talking about potentially changing the zoning, which is changing the law. Um, in such a manner that if this proposal were to get approved, somebody potentially could create properties that generally speaking would be as small as twelve thousand square feet. And that in this case, R one twelve, uh, is a general rule when communities use this kind of nomenclature, the R?
Residential.
Yep. Indicates that the primary use in that zone is intended to be residential. One oftentimes suggests that the, the main type of residential development, residential use that you'd see, single-family. And typically the numbers that follow relate somehow to what the minimum property or lot sizes could be um, in that particular zone, twelve thousand square feet, like I said, in this case. Um, so.
Thank you.
That's the proposal by way of the change of law. Um, we have a unique tool as well here, uh, the master plan development tool, which actually gives um, the city some latitude by way of potentially being able to approve a development that might not follow all of the zoning criteria in a, in a completely explicit and precise way. So for example, with this project, rather than having all of the lots um, meet a minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet, uh, provided that they cumulatively all at least average twelve thousand square feet. And I guess cumulatively is not the right way to put it, but provided that they all uh, at least have a, an average or that the average lot size in the development is at least twelve thousand square feet, the city council ultimately can approve um, a subdivision plat.
And twelve thousand square feet is how much of an acre?
It's just over a quarter of an acre.
Very good.
Thank you.
That's exactly, uh, that's helpful, I think, to everyone to understand that. In uh, when uh, we do have a planned development like this and stuff and we go with averages rather than the strict total, uh, is there a minimum amount that we allow uh, in that development? Minimum square feet?
That we require, maybe, right?
Require.
There's not. Nope. As long as the average is met, then a project's eligible to be approved. Now, I'll mention this as well, um, approving a project as a master plan development, ultimately the city council has complete discretion as to whether they do that or not. So should somebody, maybe to the question you're asking, propose something that might see? somebody, maybe to the question you're asking, propose something that might seem a little bit odd, maybe like a 4,000 square foot lot or something like that. And the city council could say, wait, that's not what the tool's intended to result in and that kind of thing.
And in this proposal, what is the smallest lot?
I'm going to ask maybe Byron or Dave to zero in on that. We'll grab that for you.
We have a couple that are obviously larger. What's that?
Maybe the applicant can speak more. We can certainly check. I'll check to make sure.
Okay. He'll check on that, and I'm sure the applicant can tell us. Is there any other questions for staff? And Dave, thank you for the explanation. I think that helps.
I hope that helps. Thanks for asking.
You bet. If there are no other questions for staff, we will entertain the applicant to come forward at this time and state your name.
My name is Brandon Dennison. Thanks for having us here. I would just like to echo what Dave was saying, that the zoning designation that we would like to go with, R112, is in line with the general plan being low-density residential. I would also note that if you can go back to the preliminary plat, we have provided stub roads both to the east and to the west, as well as a connection coming from the south. We did that with staff recommendation and also at request of the neighbors to the east, who in the future may plan to develop that as residential as well.
So the, so Dave said that you'll need to raise the property to develop on it? Is that right?
That's correct. The sewer is not very deep in this area. The sewer is coming from the south, and because of that, the property has to be raised up. If you've been over there recently, with the permit, we have already started to raise the site up in order to accommodate for the sewer being relatively shallow in that area.
How will that impact the neighbors for any kind of drainage or anything in that way?
The drainage issue would be addressed with our final plat approval, and we, of course, will make sure that there are no adverse impacts to the drainage affecting the neighbors' property. As far as the sewer goes, for their development, they would be responsible to raise their site as well to accommodate for the sewer. And it's not necessarily something that is happening because of us. The sewer that we are tapping into is already shallow, and so we're not making it more shallow necessarily. It's just that the sewer that we are tapping into is already shallow.
So the sewer has to be a certain depth to build?
Correct. Sewer being a gravity-fed utility, it has to flow downstream essentially. So if a sewer is too shallow, that's why a septic system might be used or a lift station possibly, but a shallow sewer can affect the utilities.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
We'll now open, we'll go forward with our public hearing, and we'll open the public hearing again. Anyone who would like to address this is welcome to come up, state your name, and we'll give you your three minutes.
Ross Badsgaard, we own the property to the, adjacent to, on the north side to the east. I don't have any problem at all with that property being rezoned and developed. The thing that concerns me is that, I'm glad that Dave brought up the elevation thing, because when the subdivision to the south of us was put in a number of years ago, we attended the public hearing there, and we didn't have any objection. It's nice flat land up there for building homes, and lo and behold, they put that in, and we got a six-foot berm on our property line. And now we see the same thing happen on the west. So I guess my point is that how did the city get such a shallow sewer line where all those homes are being built? And we're going to be in a hole by the time our property, our highest and best use will then be a pond by the time we're done up there. So I'm just, I don't know. It has nothing to do with this issue here. I think they've worked to try to accommodate access to us, otherwise we would have been landlocked without that little stub coming in.
True.
Because there's not access on that corner of Spanish Fork Parkway to put a road in from the other directions. But anyway, I'm just expressing a little, I hope that that's an issue that's addressed in the future, is how much are we going to have to build this thing up? Because we got caught by surprise with that.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Great. Thanks, Ross.
Hi, I'm Janine Badsgaard. They're saying I'm married to him. We have an active irrigation ditch in between us and that development, and we want to know how they are going to, what kind of plans they're going to have. We have water, a big, deep ditch that actually takes care of our property and keeps our pasture and our trees alive, and we don't want having trouble with that if the developer's not aware that this, that runs all the way along that whole east side. There's a very deep and large irrigation ditch that we all use to keep our property alive, so I want to know what they're going to do. And as far as, we've seen the thousands of truckloads of dirt they've brought in there. We are in a hole, because anyone that's developing around us has left us in a hole. And it was beautiful farm ground flat, and we assume that things could be built without putting us in a hole, so hopefully we can do something about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Janine. Janine, one question for you. You actively water out of that ditch?
Yes, we do. We actively water out of that ditch, and we can't keep our trees and our pasture or anything else alive without that.
That will...
And they can't cut that off, you know? That's the right, that we have that water right to get to us, so.
My name is John Sumption. I own with my wife the property that is east of lot 11, 10, 11, 12. And I just wanted to say to the staff that I'm grateful that you listened about the utility access and road access. Thank you. The question that I have, is there any, is the developer open to bringing pressurized irrigation in in place of the existing ditch as part of this development? That's one question. And another question is, is the sewer, depending on the size of the pipe, it has to be, it can be either shallower or goes up faster, if I understand correctly? And what I'm trying, what I am interested in is what is the size of the pipe, of the sewer pipe that is supplying this development, and what is the required incline of that? Is that something that we address at this point, or is that final plat approval?
That'll be on the final plat.
Okay. I just wanted to state on the record that we, I don't have any concern about the rezoning, and I'm grateful that the proposed plat is consistent with lots that are to the south. I had some contact with the neighbors there, and they were concerned about smaller lot sizes, and their, the lot sizes are consistent, and so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go out of public hearing. We have a couple of issues there. Some of those will be addressed as you get final plat and have to get the exact depth of all of the utilities, not just the sewer. Being somewhat aware of ditches and right-of-ways and stuff like that, part of the city approving any kind of a plan is if there is a ditch in the area, the developer will have to resolve that with Canal Company, because that ditch doesn't end with you guys. It goes across Fourth North and continues north, and I'm sure it's still serving, serving the agricultural property there. Is that only a lateral that goes around the back of you guys? Well, secondary irrigation will be part of what'll have to go in there.
For the development.
Yeah.
But...
But for you guys, you're going to have to, you'll have to address that, because it's not just your house, it's the other houses along that road, right?
There's three properties.
Three properties, so that would constitute a company ditch, and that'll have to be resolved, whether it's, you know, I don't know whether you...
The school district also uses that to irrigate their fields across from the high school.
There you go. Okay. That will have to be resolved as part of the plot plan, or not the plot plan, the plot, yeah.
It'd be the final plat.
The final plat.
So that would be the next step.
Excuse me. Yes.
The sports fields?
Yes, they rent that out to local farmer, and it's in this year.
Oh.
The rest along the high school.
Interesting.
Parkway Road, Spanish Fork Parkway.
Yeah.
Okay, wait.
So this shows it really well.
You have a pointer that can show you?
This one? Right where there's the number 125, 125 North, no, left, left, past the high school right there, that's where the, that's where the lateral comes off. The ditch goes north along that slanted line, and the lateral comes off and goes east across those two fields, actually under the backyards of that line of houses to the west of that subdivision.
Right here?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, yeah, I have. It's piped behind those houses and then piped up to our corner.
And then it comes out right, right there, and it's an open ditch from the southmost intersection there, all the way up to the, it serves the three properties to the east.
These three properties, one, two, three?
Yes, correct.
Right. And that would be resolved in the final plat?
Well, any impacts to water delivery in the area get resolved when properties develop? The notion of potentially being able to provide water via our pressurized irrigation system to those properties there, that'd be a little out of the norm. We've done it, I know, in other places, where particularly it looks like the longevity of a lateral, canal, lateral, or that type of a thing is probably pretty limited, and that sort of thing. So I think that would be certainly something we could look into with the next step.
It is problematic if that is the lateral that services the school district property to the east, because that's a significant ditch. That would be around a 10-second foot ditch, which you wouldn't be able to supply that water unless they converted to sprinkler. Then you could go with the pressurized irrigation and sprinkle that.
So our typical process is that they make application with the irrigation company?
Right.
And then at final plat, we make sure they have an encroachment permit with the irrigation company.
And the canal company may just require a certain-sized pipe be installed?
Yeah.
Pipe passed here and have outlets to the property owners that need, that have the right to use that water.
Yeah, that's...
It's up to them.
Typically what they do, yes.
And it might, I'm just thinking it wouldn't be worth tapping into the PI line if that's the ditch that is supplying that property to the east.
Certainly something I think that's, there's no reason to not look into it if the neighbors would like that to be considered or...
That's a good question. That's a good question.
So the question that we have at hand now is, this is just for our zone change, and then we have one more with this property. But this is an issue of just the zone change, and if there is no more discussion or questions for staff or the applicant, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend the zone change from AE, which is Exclusive Agriculture, to the R112 residential zone with a master plan development overlay be approved in order to develop the property for a residential subdivision, be approved to the city council. I just said a lot of, Joseph?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the it passes. Now we go to item D, which is the mellor subdivision. This involves the approval of the preliminary plat. And like our last issue that we had, we have talked about many of the things that will be part of this issue as well. And so if there's additional things that we need to know about, Dave stepped out. Is there anyone that wants to speak to this? Dave, would you?
So, yeah, this preliminary plat was coming before you because it's part of the master development overlay, so that's, but again, most of the items that are part of this review have already been discussed, but we'd be happy to answer any other questions that come up.
And we have that in our packets here, all the stuff that this is part of, we were talking about before with.
Correct.
The layout here, and it does have a lot of the material in it on everything else, the roads and the utilities and everything else, so.
Just to answer, I guess, to go back and answer that question on the sewer, the minimum size is an eight-inch that we require, so it'll be an eight-inch sewer. The flattest you can lay it is a 0.3% slope, so you can lay them pretty flat.
Is it 3%?
0.3, yeah, so it's pretty flat. But at final is when we actually do the profile engineering, so.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for taking a look at that. Perfect.
And can, oh, no, you go. Go ahead. Well, and that's why we recommend based on findings and conditions.
And can you confirm that as the preliminary plat, we are the approving body, not the recommending body, as per item number B?
Yeah, so to sound like I'm speaking out of both sides of my mouth, because from the inception of an application, to have the master plan development overlay applied to this property, we would say that the city council actually, in this case, is the authority to approve the preliminary plat.
Perfect. Thanks for clarifying.
Because it's a master plan development?
Yeah, this would differ from Sunset Villas by way of...
That was a reapproval?
It was a reapproval, but also we didn't have the master plan development overlay when that was originally approved. Master plan development was structured differently in our code. Don't want to get too wonkish about it, but.
That's good enough.
That's the distinction, so we would say the city council in this case is the authority.
Thank you. Any discussion that we need from staff? If not, we'll go into public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak about this proposal? In the public hearing is welcome to come up and use their three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend that the proposed preliminary plat be recommended for approval to the city council based on the included findings and subject to the included conditions.
Second?
We have a motion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the proposal passes. That moves us, boy, we've got a long night. I'm running out of ink. Uh, we move to, uh, finally, to item number seven. Uh, which is also a public hearing. It involve, uh, A, Title fifteen Old Dominion. Uh, who would like to tell us about this one?
Okay, I'll go ahead and have you move on to the, the next slide, Byron. So this is the Old Dominion site, um, that, uh, was approved, uh, through the site plan process. Um, part of that approval from the DRC, um, had this plan in place. You can see the highlighted areas are a proposed, uh, fencing to surround the site for security purposes. And then, uh, adjacent to this road here, you've got a parking lot with a, a separate access from here. But the, the fencing that was initially approved, you can see surrounds the site and is a setback from the road, uh, enough to meet the, the requirements that are in our code. Can I go to the next slide? This is the current layout of the, the fencing that was installed. Uh, it was done without a permit, um, and so staff went out and confirmed that with, uh, pictures and it shows the, the fencing is closer to the road and also this parking lot is completely enclosed. Um, and then the fencing, as you can see here, is also right up, it's about ten feet or five feet from the sidewalk as opposed to what was approved. So with that, um, came, uh, a proposal by the applicant to do a text amendment.
So, so just, so I understand. So they violated the code and now they're asking us to change the code? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, keep going.
Um, if you want to go ahead and go through the next few slides, uh, these are some pictures that were taken. Um, there also is, uh, some issue with the height as well. Um, currently in our code, it says the maximum height of a fence is six feet in all zoning districts. Uh, fence pillars are not allowed to exceed six and one-half feet in height. Um, the council can, uh, waive that height requirement. And then the maximum height of a fence, uh, uh, is, I think, maximum height of a solid fence within the front yard setback areas, three feet. Substantially open fences such as chain link or wrought iron may be four feet high. Um, so the. Okay, uh, so this is the, the request from, from the applicant to, to amend the requirements to allow the fence that, uh, has been constructed. This was reviewed by DRC and, uh, DRC felt that the, the code was good the way that it is and, uh, did, uh, have a recommendation to, to deny this request.
So, remind me in what, in what ways their fence is not compliant with this, with the current code?
So, uh, the, the overall height is above the six feet.
So it's eight feet, right?
Uh, yeah, um. I don't know the exact height, but, uh.
Is it otherwise out of compliance with the code or is it just that, just the height?
It's the height and the, the location does not meet the approved, uh, site plan.
What, okay, the approved site plan.
Correct.
Not necessarily the setbacks.
It does, yes.
What about the material?
It does, yes, what, what is that?
Both the setbacks and the site plan?
Getting all over.
Yeah, and, um, be careful.
Please.
Um. If it were just a matter of having not been built according to the site plan, um, but built according to what the code would permit, then it would just perhaps be a matter of amending the site plan to show it that way. But in this case, um, it was constructed where it's currently not permitted. Um, because of its height, you could have, have a three-foot, I'm sorry, in this case it'd be four-foot if it were chain link or something open. Fence constructed as close to the road as what's been built. Um, but anything taller than that is not allowed any closer than I believe twenty-five feet to the right-of-way line. And that's where, there's the problem that would then require an amendment to the zoning code to reduce that, that required setback for a fence of, of this kind of height. And that's really where we as staff struggle. Um, it's, uh, I think likely impossible to come up with a way to isolate just this property and make a, make a text amendment that would only apply here.
What's the city gonna do if this isn't approved?
I.
Joshua?
Yeah, well, I'll take a stab at it. And I'll speak maybe just generally, you know, I mean, uh, um.
Do you, do you know the cross streets of this location too while Dave's speaking that? Trying to find it, but I don't see it in the packet.
It's thirty-six fifty-eight north, seventeen thirty west. You have to scroll down a while in the packet, but.
Yeah, the state highway, it butts the property to the north. Thirty-six hundred west is how I.
The end of the runway.
So in the, in the final plat, in the final plat, does it show this fence, the height, does it describe height and material?
The site plan does.
The site plan does?
Yes.
And what did they, what did they have on their site plan as far as the, uh, the height and the material?
Yeah, so, uh, we've anticipated that the fence would be constructed, uh, chain link like what they built. Um, six feet tall. This is the approved plan, so it's outlined in yellow there and the yellow lines exist to, to be able to illustrate what has been approved. Um, so, and I'll, I'll just emphasize it, so you can see, for example, here, the fence is set back at least that far from the right-of-way line all along, again, I'm gonna call it thirty-six hundred west. That frontage there, um, also set back, uh, a distance from the state highway here. Um, and then this is what was constructed. Um, there is some setback to the right-of-way line. I think it's only a few feet, um, here. And the fence was also constructed closer to State Route seventy-seven. I think because of where the right-of-way line has ended up being along the State Route seventy-seven frontage, we don't have the same issue as what we have along the other frontage. Um, but that's, that's where what got constructed deviates from what was approved.
And then what, what, what's the city gonna do if this isn't approved?
I, I, we'd have to talk about that as staff.
Is there, is there a way to have the city approve what they've done? Is there a, a tool for that other than amending the entire city's code for one piece of property? Like, that doesn't even make sense. Sorry, I'm showing my hand too early. I don't want to amend the entire city's zoning code for one property, but I am totally opening, open to understanding why they did it and looking at whether or not I'm okay with what they did. And trucking companies, we need trucking companies, let's, I, I just want to look at it and see if we can accommodate them and what our tools are to accommodate them. Uh, those are my thoughts. Dave, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I mentioned a minute ago what, you know, maybe one of our bigger concerns with this is, I wouldn't say it's the only concern. But it is how this would impact other properties because I don't believe there is a way to say, you in the I-one zone need to meet this setback and you in the I-one zone, speaking to somebody else, don't need to or that, you know, a different rule would apply. Conceivably, you could create a new zoning district and have a different set of rules for that and apply it. I mean, like, literally, I.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
Think that's.
It's a tough position.
A path that, you know, maybe Joshua, more creative than, than I am.
Joshua really likes paperwork, so.
I, I'm, I'm kind of along the same lines, like, I think the code is great and I'm, it's frustrating and disappointing that they got one thing approved and then just decided they were gonna build how they wanted without any discussions with the city or respect for the, for the law.
But we, we don't know if that's what happened though.
But just to be careful.
Right, I guess that's right.
You never know if someone went out there and was like, yeah, we want a fence there and they didn't, they didn't know, they didn't look.
Right, of course.
I just want to be careful.
How does this generally happen? I, that this is the code, is this how you're supposed to do it? And then something else entirely different happens?
Do you make them tear it out? Do you do a fine?
Is there no, like, inspection, check, check, I, I'm just confused.
Yeah, uh, we do inspect sites throughout their construction. We're not there every day.
Okay.
Um, and in this case, somebody, somebody called their office. Excuse me, actually. Uh, and made a comment about them feeling like this fence didn't meet our requirements. We looked into it, um, while the fence was under construction and they finished up, you know, like a day or two later, so. Um, these things do happen. Um, it's not uncommon for us to, to amend approvals, you know, where we can to accommodate something. It's not uncommon for, in the field, plans to need to be modified and adjusted, you know, to fit, you know, real world, world conditions maybe that weren't considered when different things were designed. This is not the first time, however, also, that we've dealt with a situation where somebody did something that, uh, the code doesn't accommodate and people have had to, to fix it. I mean, that's, uh, that's a remedy for sure.
It's an expensive remedy. If you require them to, uh, come into compliance, you're gonna be doing things over again and I don't know whether that accomplishes what they were trying to, uh, do with this parking lot. It appears that they wanted that parking lot to be secure. So that's the reason they wanted a tall fence around it. But it is definitely not according to the code. And I just can't see amending the code to allow for this instance because, uh, the door is open and then I think that, uh, that leads to a lot of problems, in my personal opinion. Uh, I, I do go along with Joseph, you know, this, it's an unfortunate thing. We have had a few other things, even buildings too close to something, fences too close to something, and they're still there. I don't know, I don't know what recourse we have as a city. I don't know whether we want to exercise those. All I can tell you is, is, you know, I don't think that we should. As, as far as what I can say now is that I would vote to not change Title fifteen to accommodate this. What, what we can work out, I'd like to see something worked out.
Of course.
But I don't know what that is and I, uh, this is, this is gonna be a public hearing, so is there people here that are here to discuss it?
Yeah, it's.
So, I'm gonna open public hearing in a minute, but finish what?
Yeah, we, we need to hear out the applicant on this, certainly.
So, let's hear from the applicant.
Can I just interject and then I think I can shut up?
Okay.
Dave, don't, 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 don't shut up.
I will unless I'm spoken to, I promise. Um, I, so the concern, um, about making this something that somebody could do throughout the I-one zone, there's some different layers to that. Uh, we've worked closely with other projects in the area on fencing that they want to have, even where it meets the setback requirement, um, to have that constructed in such a way that, um, the area feels more like a business park maybe than something, you know, that's heavier industry and that sort of thing. We did it with Utah County when they found a jail. We did it with a site to the north of that where there is a very large industrial user planning to, to secure an area. Um, and they would be using, uh, like, some type of wrought iron fence versus chain link with barbed wire to make that happen. Um, if you can go to maybe the front door image, um, the result of, um, not meeting the setback and having the fencing right out front. I'm gonna borrow phraseology from some of our other DRC staff members, but, um, there's a certain institutional type of look that the site has now um, that, uh, we've worked hard to avoid in this part of the community. Uh, we have no concerns at all and see value in, um, operators in the area having secured space for whatever purpose they, they desire. Um, but, uh, the way this has been done is a, is a concern for us beyond just, you know, the violation that it is, so.
Let's have the applicant come up and state your name if you will.
Thank you. Um, appreciate your comments, Dave, and everybody. Uh, my name's Lonnie Reed. I'm the civil engineer on the project, been working on this since, uh, early twenty-twenty-two. Um, I've got with me Seth Collins. Um, he is the development and real estate manager with, uh, Old Dominion Freight Line. Comes from Kansas City today and.
Barbecue, really good barbecue.
Yes.
I'm jealous.
As well as Jeremy Evans. He's with First Construction. Uh, he's the project manager on this. Uh, a couple of items I want to address, um, the, the first being the, uh, safety and security of the, uh, drivers in the facility as well as the merchandise, uh, the amount of product that moves through the site. I'm gonna leave that for Seth to, to address here in a minute. Um, but I want to make sure that everybody understands that with the violation that happened here, there was absolutely no malintent, uh, no trying to get around the code, anything like that. In fact, uh, I want to correct something that I, I see as a potential, um, mistake in the staff report. Um, the approved site plan that was shown in there, um, I have a, a, amended site plan that was approved in June that shows, uh, that I pulled from the, the city's, uh, documents that shows the, the fence being an eight-foot fence in the location that it is now. Um, the, the thing that got missed in this was the application for a fence permit. But I do have an approved site plan stamped by the city that, uh, shows eight-foot fence in the location it's at now. Um, and according to that, the fence is in the correct location.
Do you have that?
Yes. Uh, if you'd like to see it, I can bring it.
I want to see it.
Yeah.
It's kind of a big deal.
Kinda, yeah. Can I bring it up here? Sure.
Permission to approach.
Here's the approved set. It's approved six-sixty-four.
Okay. I'll see that.
It shows the fence around here, the gate here.
Just follow the line now. Shoot. Try and scroll over to follow the line, sorry. Is it showing it on this backside? Is it showing it actually enclosed coming out of our time following it? Oh, here it is, SP O eight, yeah. Yeah. Son of a gun.
On that question.
Yes.
I want to find that. How can I find that? Now, i- if, if it's in our system, how would I find it?
Will hereby admit that exhibit into the public record?
Citizens.
So noted.
Just deny this, the request.
Yeah.
And then they just work it out.
Hundred percent, what is it?
Yeah.
Yes.
And hopefully they're like, considerate because.
That they work out.
Chucking is my way of life. I just want to be kind of considerate, but also enforce.
Like an internal city issue.
I agree.
Michelle, you you know what you should do? You should run a big company. That's a great idea, great idea.
Have we already had public hearing? Can I make a motion?
We're in it. Oh, no, we were talking to the applicant.
We can go back to the barbecue.
Oh, yeah.
I was in Kansas City, there's some good barbecue. This year.
I think we need to discuss very much.
Yeah, I can't remember the name of the place. It was an old gas station. It took us an hour to get in there. That's it, yes.
Joe's KC is delicious. I haven't had it in Kansas City, but I've had it at the Rib Fest in Mesquite. No, Reno, Reno, every year. I've gone four of the last five years to, it's called a Rib Fest. And Joe KC has an, is an applicant in that tournament of barbecue. It is a dream to attend that place, to attend that, and then you get to judge the ribs. It's unbelievable.
We got off topic a little bit. Sorry. Food always comes up, you know, you live in Spanish Fork, you gotta, you gotta know your food.
Right.
I'm very happy.
That there's a Rib Fest in Reno?
And ribs, absolutely. Sorry, I wasn't spoken to, but to chime in. I think this is worth looking into, I really do. And yet, I'm pretty comfortable jumping to a conclusion that that plan, which is in the building permit file, was not reviewed by the body that would have had to have approved
Yeah.
an amended site plan, which would be the DRC.
I can see that.
So.
Dave, I can speak to that a little bit, if you'd allow me.
Sure.
In the building permit comments, it has, the red line says continue to work with the DRC to approve the amended site plan. On that same day, I have a DRC red line comment that says there are no additional red lines. So I think that piece got, didn't get picked up by the DRC and got missed in between the building permit application and the DRC comments.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I truly, we're happy to dig into that, and it sounds like we need to, probably in a different forum. What I can say with a lot of confidence is that what the DRC reviewed, what our staff reviewed, and what was acted upon complied with the city code. And beyond that, I think
And I think the mistake was made on our part, that we did not follow through with our architect and make sure that he applied for a fence permit. We made the assumption that it was done, and we had the building permit that showed the fence on there. We gave it to our contractor. He went out and installed the fence per plan, and it happened. I just want everybody to know that there's no malintent.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
We appreciate your willingness to try and find a way to work with us on this.
I think, I think that what we need to do at this point, as the Planning Commission, is, I don't know that I meet, well, I think that we can move forward with with whether we recommend to deny or approve the change in Title fifteen. We can go forward with that, but as far as what's going to be done, that has to be taken care of between Old Dominion and Spanish Fork City at this point in time, and how that's going to be resolved. That doesn't have anything to do with us tonight.
Unless we approved it and City Council approved it, then that has something to do with us, but anyway, keep going.
That's true, but we're not, we're not even asking for that, other than, the only thing that's before us is Title fifteen.
Right, and if we approve it, then they're compliant.
Then they're compliant.
But if City Council approves it.
True.
That's what I'm saying.
You're right.
I I'd like to give Seth at least the the opportunity to talk because
Absolutely.
there might be something he says and what he presents that might make you consider.
Sure, you bet.
Good evening, everyone. I am, my name is Seth Collins, and thank you for allowing me the time to speak. I was very happy just sitting there, though, bypassing my time.
Exactly.
I agree with Lonnie. He's right, you know, there was no malice with the situation that we find ourselves in now. It was merely an oversight, and, you know, on behalf of Old Dominion, we apologize for that. But how we got to this situation with the fencing the way that it is, is, you know, number one, it's a security reason with not only the employee parking and the property as a whole, but also the detention ponds as well, as a public safety feature, you know, that'd be one of the last things I'd wanna see happen, is for someone to fall in there and, you know, having a a situation arise, so that's why we're in the situation that we're in. Not just with motor freight, but in in all industries where there are large parking lots or parking facilities, crime is an issue, not to mention the type of freight that we move off of our docks. It's very important to our security team, you know, if they were here to speak, they would tell you, you know, security is very important, not just from the public, but, you know, at large facilities or large industries like ours, you know, we have over two hundred and seventy facilities. There's also internal issues that arise. So one of the things that our internal security team, along with the FBI now at this point, are tracking is there is a ring that is going around the country, and we're only seeing it in our newer tractors that are purchased. There's the, basically, the control unit. Thieves are stealing those and selling them or doing whatever. So it's just another reason why security is very important to us. Not for just the sake of our equipment, but also employees, you know, in an operation like this, we'll have a hundred to a hundred fifty employees, and some of those employees are line haul or long haul drivers. What that means is they'll park their vehicles in this parking lot for, you know, seven days to twenty-eight days. So, you know, similar to, you know, you go to the airport and leave your car parked there. Majority of those fences, they're gonna be eight feet or more with barbed wire, just because something short will be easier to climb and, you know, cars broken into, so. Again, I appreciate you all giving me the time to speak, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thanks. You've got a coach that we endorse, so that's good. You know he's from this area. Did you have anyone else who's gonna speak tonight? Very good. Okay.
So I guess, I guess my question after that is to, is to say, could this, could this become something that's like, it could be approved based on, I mean, it could be an exception that could be approved if it comes before
I have the same question. Can they just apply for a fence variance? Through the City Council?
Short answer would be no. That's not an option. I'll go back to the start of the conversation, and let's just set aside maybe the prospect that there was something that the city somehow did approve, maybe authorize by way of some action that we took. That aside, it's a text amendment. The notion, let's say, that somehow the city did knowingly approve something, somebody on city staff did something that would have authorized the construction of a fence, even just, you know, part of that process, that's something we'd certainly wanna discuss as city staff, and that might open up some possibilities for different ways that we could approach it. Beyond that, I don't have a lot.
I'm gonna ask a very specific question. I still don't like the idea of changing Title fifteen. But it's my understanding that the City Council is a legislative body who can, who can do things outside of some of these regulations and Title fifteen, if they choose to, that they can supersede that as the legis, they're the only ones that can do it, as a legislative body, if I understand that correctly. If there was some kind of a mix-up, if the City Council were to decide that this is one of those issues, that it was no one's fault, I mean, obviously, it would have been changed had you have known about it. They didn't see a reason to go any further because they had an amended plan that they have, you know, that's their way they see it, and you guys are gonna resolve that. But maybe the way to resolve the whole thing is just to have the City Council say, there was a screw-up, we can't really justify, you know, how it went down, so in this particular case.
Alleged.
Alleged, alleged, because this is all part of.
As the attorney.
Isn't that something that could happen to say, because there was no malice intended on anyone's part, this part, this thing and this thing in and of itself is settled, and we're going to leave it.
I wanna let Joshua correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, maybe Joshua should answer.
Pride to hear from him, but the City Council makes laws.
Yes.
That's the legislative side of things. They make laws in as much as the the state legislature is giving them the ability to that doesn't mean they're above the law. They have to follow the law. They can change it, but they still have to follow it. So we, as the city, you know, regardless of maybe what way it cuts, we follow the law. Now, what the City Council might do, and this is where I'm getting on thin ice.
I don't wanna put word in, words in their mouth.
They could tell us, no, it's a violation, and, you know, take your time getting around to enforcing a correction. They could do that very tacitly, even, without, you know, taking a real proactive stance, but I, Joshua, I don't know.
I'll just say, as an example, if I see you speeding down the road, or if an officer sees you speeding down the road, they can choose to pull you over and give you a ticket, they can choose to pull you over and give you a warning, they can choose not to pull you over. It is the law that you should drive the speed limit. If you violate that law, they have the right, the duty, to enforce that law. They can choose not to. Right? Similar thing with the City Council, essentially what Dave's saying is, they should, they they pass the law, they should enforce the law, they should follow that law if they want to be, if they want to give direction to turn a somewhat blind eye for a period of time, then they can direct that, but it's our job as staff to do our best to enforce the law, right? So that's what we're gonna continue to do until we're, well, that's what we're gonna continue to do.
Well, my final comment would be that as far as us as a body, the Planning and Zoning Commission, we don't, we are not going to do anything with this matter because it is out of our hands.
So the only thing that's in your. The only thing that's in your hands is whether you can do a text amendment.
Whether or not we're gonna recommend a text.
That's right.
That's what we're.
And we can do that.
Recommend it or not.
And it's not specific language.
Correct.
Yeah. We don't have red lines.
Yeah, and I'm just, I wanna clarify, if we do vote and deny the amendment, it's not tied to this specific project or reason, this is just denying an amendment.
Correct.
Also wondering if we have an alternative of tabling this item until it's worked out in detail at the staff level and perhaps City Council?
Maybe we, if we vote to table, it will, it will still go, no, it won't go to the City Council.
But the, but the amendment, but the issue could still go to the City Council.
It will.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is, is that's.
But not, not the amendment, but but the fencing issue.
But the fencing issue is a staff thing, not a City Council thing.
But if they're the legislative body.
But for us, maybe the best thing to do then is to table it. And not let it, and not have it go to the City Council in two weeks.
I don't agree, but have you opened it to public hearing yet? I'm ready to make a motion.
If not. We're gonna do that right now, so.
That was not very kind. You know I mean that in the kindest way.
In the very kindest way. So I'll now open the public meeting. Anyone from the public that would like to make their thoughts known is welcome to come to the podium and address us at this time and use your three minutes. Seeing none, we'll go out of public hearing. So now, we can go forward with that. And I would like a little discussion amongst the commission as far as our feelings about which way to go. We've got three options. Recommend to approve, recommend to deny, or to table it.
I feel like you're looking at Mike. Mike, go ahead.
I would just say, I'd like to see what they can work out before I do anything.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna table if it's gonna take more, whatever's gonna get them resolved quicker is what I'd like to do.
I don't see it affecting them one way or the other.
To table it? Or if we deny.
Voting to deny it, doesn't matter.
John?
I, the only reason that I would wanna table it is if there was any way to put, if there was any way to put some kind of way to give an exception or a variance for this, otherwise, I'm, I just think we just, I would just vote to deny it.
I'm also in favor of, go ahead, sorry, John, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I would be good to table, but I also would vote to deny the amendment.
And we also don't have specific language for an amendment, but in, nonetheless, we have proposed changes that I'm against. And it changes the entire zoning. I'm good with, I I think I'm good with whatever you guys wanna do. There's not anything that's been proposed to be done that I'm against, 'cause the only thing I'm against is saying, I, we approve the text amendment to the zone.
If we vote to deny, it still goes to the City Council.
No, it doesn't change anything.
No, it's, no, but this item still goes, because we're recommending a denial, so it goes to the City Council. At that point, can they do anything, or are we just wasting their time?
I think regardless, they need to go talk to staff.
Right, no, I know. I I understand that, but if.
Do you mean, can the City Council do anything?
Other, more than we can do. If we send this through
Sure.
to the City Council, can they do more than we can do?
We will just rec, if we recommend to deny it, it'll just go to them that we recommended to deny it, just like staff recommended that we deny it.
And then they have the ability to do, to choose what to do from there.
Okay.
And I guess if.
You had another, you had another thought, Joseph.
No, I'm good.
Okay, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I move that we deny the proposed, that we recommend to the City Council to deny the proposed changes to Title fifteen fencing in clear vision area. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And I hope they work with Old Dominion.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And those, and those who are opposed, saying none, the motion passes. I think that the main thing here is, is that we want to see staff work with Old Dominion as as closely as possible and resolve the issues. And when we get them all resolved, we'll all learn something, I guess.
And that everyone feels good about, that Old Dominion feels happy.
We certainly want, we want you here.
The, the thing we're denying is changing the entire zoning law for the whole city. Yeah, that, that facility that you're talking about, instantly, they may not be moving forward. But that site, they got approved by the City Council for an eight-foot tall fence. And that's the wrought iron.
Yeah, I suspect it's wrought iron, knowing the city staff.
Yeah, I suspect it's wrought iron, knowing the city staff it won't be chain link.
They probably would have done the same thing with you guys and gone wrought iron instead of.
If you wanted to go eight, that's probably what would have happened.
Yeah, we'll talk more about that in a minute. Eight foot.
Yeah.
May I have a quick discussion just about timing? Is that?
Timing?
Aye. Do you mind?
Sure.
Timing.
We have this teed up to go to the city council next week. That means we need to send the material tomorrow. I think there's probably value in us, you know, looking into the things that, that you shared with us tonight, maybe getting together to talk about some things. I'd want to get your consent to hold off on putting this on a council agenda. So it'd be at least until the, ends up being the second week in February, sorry, January.
January.
But I, as I think the commission's mentioned several times, I think there, there is value in us discussing things further and, and that type of thing, so.
I agree. I'd like to, you know, permit it, make sure that, you know, we're all on the same page and have our ducks in a row, so to speak.
Okay. Okay, I, I appreciate that. We'll proceed accordingly and we'll, we'll be in touch somehow sooner than later, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate the help.
Thank you.
And your comments. Thanks. Okay, we'll move to item B, which is indoor pickle courts.
Is that dill pickle courts?
Ooh.
Or sweet?
Bread and butter.
Bread and butter and pickles?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
You've got to have a gram off you.
Guys have been so patient for, at least it's not 11. We have some meetings that go real late. Thank you.
I really want to just pick up where we left off, which is with the proposal to amend Title 15. And incidentally, the way we're discussing this tonight, I mean, it's kind of my brainchild. To create a specific land use designation for indoor pickleball courts, to define that, and then to create a parking requirement just for that use. There are likely other ways that we could go about, maybe addressing how pickleball courts get regulated otherwise, but that's the proposal that we discussed last month. It was continued last month so that the folks that actually want to operate pickleball courts could attend your meeting. The proposed parking requirement, and I, I think from staff's perspective, that's the biggest thing that we want to get right. And this is, again, largely my fault, we could say. It's being proposed as an allowed use in our industrial zoning districts, provided that three parking spaces per court are provided. And then with another provision to make sure a minimum number of spaces are, are provided.
And staff's good with this now? You've done the research, you feel good about this number?
I, I'm comfortable with this number in our industrial zone.
Is this, is this more than what was last month? What was the?
The same, no change.
Other than, you've looked into it?
Frankly, no. Really haven't done much additional research.
That's a really honest answer.
Yeah.
You still have the same position?
Yeah, yeah. And likewise, if the number were four, I mean, I wouldn't be comfortable with anything less than three. So, you know, if you or the city council feel like that's not enough. One thing that, I mean, it, it rang a certain bell when we counted the number of parking spaces that are provided with our 16-court facility at the sports park. And, you know, it's, it's approaching 100, if not over 100. And of course, that parking lot doesn't just serve the pickleball courts, but I've been there. I've seen, you know, those parking spaces utilized for 16 courts, so you could do the math there. But as in, maybe as much as anything, I think it's a great benefit tonight to hear from the folks that do this day in and day out. Anything that I can help with beyond that for now?
I think that we were just concerned because we see this 16-court outdoor facility and they have pa, they're packed. We're concerned that three wasn't enough. That's where we ended last month. Does anybody else remember any other concerns? Oh, does anybody else remember any other concerns? Todd was, Todd was particularly concerned. I'm sure I was too, but, because it says so in the, in the minutes.
The podcast really emphasizes that.
I do have one comment about that, however, is that almost all of the outdoor pickle courts are adjacent to other things, whether it be more athletic courts, like basketball, court soccer, or, you know, other things, and a lot of them have ballparks that are located mostly in recreational facilities, just like ours are. And I go to a lot of ballgames in Spanish Fork. And at times, I would imagine that more than half of those spaces are taken up by the little league field that's right there, because that, that's the only place that they have to park. And you've got the softball fourplexes right there that is packed. And so I don't think that that's a fair assessment. One in Mapleton, I go past quite a bit on 1600 South. Again, there are other facilities there, and they get a lot of, of outside stuff. They don't know exactly how to handle it. They have people coming from outside of Mapleton to play on their courts. And so they're not really sure how to, how to regulate that. The only one that I know of that's an indoor facility is the one that's the Sun Rock facility between the, between the Springville exits. And as I go past there, it never seems to be very full. Seems like there's between four and 10, maybe 12 cars there. And that's an indoor facility. I have no idea how many courts they have or anything, but when it comes to an indoor facility, it doesn't seem like they are nearly as busy because it's for pickleball only.
But we were looking at a preliminary plat in a building that had some other shared businesses, and I think that that was our concern.
That we might infringe on those other businesses.
Or just that they, just the other bit, yeah, that pickleball might, anyway, they might infringe upon each other. I think that was our concern.
Yeah. And I apologize, Commissioner Carroll. Do you need any more background or would you like anything? I didn't mean to, I took for granted.
Maybe we can hear from the applicant.
Yeah, I.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thanks.
This is a public hearing, so we need to hear from them.
A pickleball drive there, is what they're saying, so they might need parking spots. So that's where we're at.
I promise I will address all your concerns.
Your name, please.
My name is Rachel Fox. I am with The Pickler Corporate. So our headquarters are in Caseville, Utah. We are Utah-based, but we are now national and international. So we focus on indoor pickleball courts, which are set up quite different from all the outdoor experiences that you are dealing with in your communities. We have a membership-only process and it is reservation-only. So we can dial in, and we did a parking study across the past four years of being open. We had seven, seven corporate stores open the past four years before we even franchised. Sorry. And now, we have almost 46 locations open across the nation and Canada and Australia. Anyway, we continue to grow just because the membership-only, reservation-only system works very well. So we can dial in with our parking study, 2.6 parking stalls per court, per location. So we have a 10-court facility we are planning with the landlord. And with the parking study, we have done, it is a non-bias study by Hales Engineering. So I can send it to anyone who is interested, and I would have had it on hand if I had known, but you've been working with my partner, so it's okay. Yes, per court, so 10 courts in this facility, so on average.
12 courts.
12?
Yes.
12, apologies. 12, so 2.6 times 12 on average. And we have about two employees on hand at all times, and they are part-time. We have a club coordinator, and then they switch out based on who is either teaching or cleaning. So it's a very low employee need. But if we're ever going to do, say, a grand opening, which we are hoping to do with all of you there, we would also utilize the side, and they have designated 74 stalls for The Pickler on the east side and the north side. And then all the other tenants down the way have their own designated stalls, so we would not even encroach on their area. So if you have any questions about that, the flow and our proposition, the reservation-only system works with an app, so you have to sign in. And you can only sign up for up to two hours at a time for people per court at max, sometimes only two. So with our parking study, friends have driven together or family members drive together, or parents are bringing their children for classes, so across the board, it's 2.6.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else?
No. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for doing the research, Rachel, and coming and like actually telling us, because that's really helpful.
Dave?
It's very clear.
Did you have a call-in?
Question.
Question.
And, and I appreciate what she just shared. That lines up very well with what I had understood. And, you know, the nature of the technology that you're using. I, I believe in that, and I believe that that likely does reduce the amount of parking that you need for your indoor pickleball court operation. It's hard for us to write zoning language that would require somebody to have the same business model and the same, you know, operating procedures and that type of a thing. So we would generally want to kind of hedge our bets and not plan for the best-case scenario. But rather, we are always designing standards for the lowest kind of common thing that's out there. Relative to what you want to do in Spanish Fork, what, what would you be comfortable with as the highest parking requirement that we might set in the code? If you have 12 courts and there are 70 spaces that are going to be designated, and I could do the math there, and, you know, we're north of five spaces then. And that, I mean, that would be kind of the advice that I would maybe give the commission and the council would be, let's go ahead and aim high. This is a new thing for us. This is before the planning commission, because you've proposed the operation here in town and the change. I'm hedging a little bit, kind of covering, trying to cover myself, being the one that's, that suggested the three standard, but, and even if maybe it's four, just to provide some cushion.
I like four.
I like four.
I like four, not less than 12. I'm just one person, though.
I think four is actually, having listened to, is it Rachel? Having listened to Rachel, I think four is the ceiling, to me, it sounds like.
So not above that, or don't go.
That seems like plenty.
We'd write it as the minimum, but that's how.
Right. I would, yeah, I'm, I'm now comfortable with three, and I think four is a good buffer to, if there's other.
Yes. All right. We've had, as we will go into public hearing because we are required. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Any further discussion, questions, or answers? Comments?
Well, because 2.6, oh, are you, wait, a public hearing?
We're done.
This is probably beating a dead horse, but because 2.6 is what is needed when the operation is completely dialed in, which I believe theirs is, I'm comfortable with four as a zoning requirement.
The reason that I like four is, is that your business model may not be the same business model that the next people have. And so by going from 2.6 to four, it's likely to cover us, and so I like four. That's my opinion.
And these guys are at 5.8, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice you.
Yeah. So. All right. If there's no more discussion, I would entertain a motion on this.
I move the planning commission recommends approval of the I-1 indoor pickleball court amendments to the, to Title 15 with the following change of four parking stalls per court, not less than 12.
Second.
We have a, a motion and two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. We're going to go really close. Okay, now we go to item C, under Title 12 amendment, or Title 15 amendments, which are just amendments.
I don't, there's not, I click on that and there's nothing attached to those amendments. I, but I did check the.
Uh, we do have them.
Construction standards.
We have a bunch of, we have a bunch of them.
But that's under the construction standards. Is that the same thing?
Are those all construction? These are construction standards.
Okay, thank you.
It's online.
Okay. We do not have these.
It's nice that she texts, she texts.
Now, these, are these, you meant, because we do have another, so the last thing on our agenda is built, uh, construction standards.
He has the C up on there.
Yes, and so this is the one that, that we're missing.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got the others that we've got in hand. Okay, thank you.
David or Dave?
In a suit, he's David.
Okay. Stop me when you feel like you want me to.
Thanks, we look forward to having you in Spanish Fork. Thanks for taking the time.
Thanks, you guys. Sorry we took so long.
Stall for Michelle at all? No? What do you say?
She's good. She'll be back in a sec.
Okay. She's a quick learner, for sure. Pardon me?
Tell that joke, you know, to kill some time. Wait for it.
You know that one joke?
About the cheese?
Mic and camera off, and I will tell jokes until that happens.
It starts out so there was a city planner.
It is not happening. So, I, I'm just going to go through these by page number. And it can maybe happen faster than you might think.
And Dave, we just, we just talked while you were over there, they don't have these in front of them, other than what's on the screen.
You have something that's really similar, though, what got attached to the agenda. And I can point out what's different about this document from what's on the agenda.
We don't think anything was attached to the agenda.
The agenda, but the bill.
Oh, there's not.
For that, for the.
There is construction standards revision next, the next one down. Is that, is that this?
No.
Okay, yeah, we haven't seen this.
I'll go a little bit slower then.
You're probably good.
Okay, I appreciate that, too. Our building official believes we need to change how we measure setbacks. This typically would apply to single-family homes. To give an allowance for an eve that would extend out from the wall of a home, obviously, so that the foundation and wall of a home actually can be closer to a property line than what we currently allow. I can make it a lot more complicated, but this would essentially allow somebody to build about a foot closer to a property line than what currently we permit. And this is more consistent with how other cities measure setbacks than what we currently do. The fact that we're not more consistent with how other cities measure setbacks has created friction between our building inspectors and builders that come to Spanish Fork expecting us to operate like other places that they work in and end up having problems. So this is a peacemaking step, among other things.
So roof eaves or how about?
Window wells. Yeah, this would be, so window wells could extend into the, the candidate, into the setback.
Up to one foot.
Window wells can extend to the setback as much as somebody would care to. Roof eaves, one foot. Does that make sense? Okay. Walls. We require walls in certain situations. So for example, along the north boundary line of roots, where they abut a residential use. where they abut a residential use, we require a masonry wall. And I'll spare the individual's name right now, but we've worked with a developer that has built what I think is a really ugly masonry wall, gray cinder block. And to cap the wall, they have taken concrete, looks like they've kind of hand-rolled it on top of the wall to create a cap. And I don't believe that meets the intent of having a wall requirement to help maybe beautify a project and to be an enhancement. So the definition that's included here has some language added to the existing definition that describes, for example, decorative walls versus decorative walls or walls constructed with split-face blocks, colored blocks, soldier courses, textured coatings, wall and column caps, or other features provided to adorn the wall. Cinder block walls constructed without decorative caps or other features listed above are not decorative walls. So we're trying to provide a basis to say this wall doesn't work, where it's a plain, I'm gonna say, ugly wall. Any questions about that?
May as well be a chain-link fence.
It might be less obtrusive, yeah, might blend in more with the surroundings. So there's that. And I'll touch on that in a couple of different ways as we proceed. So next page, page three. City councils directed us in the industrial one, industrial two, and industrial three zones to allow people to build eight-foot-tall fences. Just by right, eight-foot-tall fences. Right now, the code says that before any fence that's taller than six feet can be constructed, the city council has to approve it. And throughout the city, so.
What did we just talk, how is this different than what we just talked about for 45 minutes?
This is identical to, this would solve one of their problems.
One, oh, one of their.
This would not solve the setback issue. Does that make sense? This would only apply to our industrial areas. So for example, at your home, Commissioner Warnock, you want to have an eight-foot-tall fence? You'd have to request approval for that from the city council. Does that make sense?
So that's how, I mean, when I was, when we were saying we wouldn't mind if there was a way to get a variance, that's how you do it, though, right?
It's not a variance. The code has.
Requesting to get an approval.
Which is what the code says. So the law says you can't build anything taller than six feet unless the city council approves it. So I guess maybe one way that we could handle the setback issue on Old Dominion would be to say, your setback for an eight-foot-tall fence has to be at least 25 feet unless you receive approval from the city council. That would require a text amendment to make that happen. Hadn't thought about that. Maybe doing something like that, providing some measure of discretion for the council to say yea or nay.
I'd support that, for sure.
Didn't think about that before, sorry.
Well, you could deny it.
If I was the applicant, I would have redlined it. I actually proposed language. They didn't, they just said what they wanted, but then, they didn't propose language.
Yeah. Still a little buggy.
So anyway, this one, I think, is pretty cut and dry. Onto the next pages, please, Byron. The next several pages, the red, bold-faced text doesn't really jump out. It just adds the word decorative in front of wall. The different places like there, where I believe we intend for people to build a decorative wall instead of just regular, a regular cinder block wall. For example, in industrial parts of the city, in my opinion, if somebody wants to just build a cinder block wall, we don't necessarily care. But with the development enhancement overlay, infill overlay, and different things like that, we're trying to upgrade neighborhoods, the word decorative has been inserted. And that covers a number of pages. As you scroll through Forrest Byron, down to and including page 12, where that word decorative, I think, is inserted the last time for infill overlay projects.
Whose job is that, to find all the little detail, please, that you've got to put in decorative?
Yeah, that's a global word search thing.
So not too bad.
Yeah. Okay, master plan development overlay district, the changes that are proposed for this. Onto page 16 here. So this has been a topic of some discussion already tonight. Mr. Bickel, the city attorney, and I, in your last meeting set over here, when there was some discussion about, do we approve preliminary plats for master plan developments or not? I don't know if you guys remember that. I do. And Vaughn and I said, well, the council has to approve the overlay zone. So why would they not be the approving body for a preliminary plat as well? And this simply, the language that we have at the end of the sentence that follows C and accompanying preliminary plat, so it clarifies that the city council is the land use authority for preliminary plats for master plan developments. That's it.
Good idea, because it prevents them from going to a lot of trouble that the city council may not approve in the final plat.
I would probably just make it planning commission's discretion, but if they want to vote on more stuff, it's fine.
They already have to vote on the law part, the zoning, so it kind of just goes part and parcel, then.
Unless, unless it's an MBD plat without a zone change. But it doesn't matter. I'm good with it. I just, I would have planning commission do more, not less, on something like that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that's, that's the right way to trend. The R4 zone.
How dense, remind us how dense the R4 zone is?
Up to 20 units to the acre. It's the most dense zoning district that we have. So on page 19.
You skipped page 17.
Byron, thank you.
On street parking.
Sorry, my copy's not in color, so. This has been a touchy issue by way of how projects in the R4 zone can meet our parking requirements. The R4 zone is unique, and we'll talk about the R3 zone as well in a minute. By way of buildings in the R4 zone, today, all buildings have to have frontage on a public street. The next change suggests a slight modification to that. But where we require developers to build public streets, and we require streets to be built so as to accommodate on-street parking, we've received quite a bit of pushback over the years for not letting them count at least some of that on-street parking towards the parking requirement. And there are some reasons that we've been really reluctant to do that. We think a lot here about snow and plowing and the requirement that people have their cars off of streets, you know, within a certain period of time during and after snowstorms. But that still being the case, we're comfortable as city staff, and likely the first project that this would apply to is the potential residential development that would happen at the mouth of the canyon, the Finger Hut site or Western Distribution site, with the notion that up to 20% of a project's off-street parking requirement can be satisfied with on-street parking. I shouldn't have probably put it that way. Up to 20% of a project's parking requirement can be satisfied with on-street parking. Need to leave that off-street part off. So for example, if you have 100 units in a development zoned R4, and therefore 2.5 spaces per home, you have to provide 250 parking spaces to meet the requirement. 20% of the 250 would be 50 spaces. Conceivably, if you can demonstrate how, most likely in a parallel parking kind of fashion, you have room for 50 or more parking spaces, you could satisfy 20% of your parking requirement with on-street parking. Any questions about that? Any concerns about that?
I mean, my only concern is how do you resolve that with your snow ordinance, but.
I think we might have interesting situations for like three days a year when the snow's an issue. I think the residents maybe get creative about how it works. I'm not all that worried about it. Other people are, for sure, staff. So then the next one over on 19. So this, and incidentally, changes like these, there's a story, you know, with all of them. This would apply to at least two different projects that we're looking at right now. Again, we require buildings in the R4 zone to have frontage on a public street. We're looking at two sites right now where there are kind of isolated little portions of a project, or where the overall site's configuration is such that we don't necessarily want public streets to go to. In this case, it's townhome buildings that they've designed into the projects. We're not talking about, you know, three or four-story apartment buildings and that type of a thing. Hence, the, you know, where structures have eight or fewer units. And incidentally as well, that, you know, when we're talking about a certain number of the units in a development, or a portion of units in a development, the city council could grant an exception to the street frontage rule. So not a guarantee, but, you know, it'd open up the door at least to have this type of concept considered. I'm gonna pick up the pace here. Page 22, changing the title there from off-street parking just to parking. And then down on point number eight, this again relates to the parking side of it. Again, the city council can grant an exception to projects in the R3 and R4 zone as we talked about earlier, for up to 20% of the required parking. Where it can be provided on-street. The next section is probably one of the more difficult ones to describe succinctly. We have provisions in Title 15 that allows the planning commission to hear a proposal that somebody could make to be able to expand a non-conforming use. Where the planning commission conceivably could approve a proposal to expand a non-conforming use.
I think that's a great idea.
That's how the code reads today.
Okay, and what are you changing it to?
I'm suggesting we make the DRC the land use authority for that. So for example, and this is the case that came about.
I just like that there's an actual.
There's a mechanism for it. This hasn't been used in 20 years that I can recall. It's been on the books.
More cities need this.
So right now, the mechanism is planning commission, and you're saying, let's move that to the DRC from the planning commission?
Right.
And I'm just relieved they have the mechanism.
Make it a little bit more streamlined. We can be more nimble, where the DRC generally meets every week and that sort of thing. In case it helps to kind of describe how this came about. Property owner has a single-car garage that was built 100 years ago, which you see all over town. And 100 years ago, setbacks weren't a thing. Cities didn't require buildings to be built a certain distance from property lines. So in this case, the single-car garage is built on the property line. Generally speaking, single-car garages that were built 100 years ago don't really hold contemporary vehicles all that well, and that sort of a thing. So the structure is non-complying because it doesn't meet setbacks. Therefore, us approving a building permit for it to be expanded, or in this case, torn down and reconstructed to be bigger, that violates kind of the underlying rule typically applied to non-conforming uses. This opens up the door for her to come in and say, hey, you've got this old garage, it's falling apart, I don't want to invest more money in it, it doesn't meet my needs. Let me build it four feet longer on one side, so making it more non-conforming in that regard. And let me make it six feet longer towards the interior of the lot, which is something nobody really cares about. And our code already allows, you're not really making it more non-conforming if you build in that direction in the code's view. But it provides a way for somebody to enhance something. I think inherently, that's the type of thing we want to see people do. And this, again, would make the DRC the approving body for something like that.
We had a garage issue on Third South that was like that not long ago. That they wanted to do some other stuff that prevented the whole project, but it had that garage that was on the side that was non-conforming.
You're talking Dance Studio?
Yeah.
Which one, yeah, okay. That's kind of even a different issue.
That was the least of their issues.
Yeah, right, I think. Okay, winding, winding down here, very end of this. I don't think we can regulate, if you go to the very last part on page 27. I don't think we can require, just when somebody changes the name on a sign, for the sign therefore to be brought into conformity, I think we need to strike that, so. Again, the last changes. And there's, there's something missing here. This is what we talked with Mr. Heaps about. So this is the complete neighborhood zone. This would differentiate three zoning districts from all other residential zoning districts. Be the R16, I should also add the R18, and would like to do that, so it'd be R16, R18, and R19 zones that would have a two-acre minimum project size. The minimum project size of five acres would stay the same for all of the other zoning districts. And that's that change, so.
Oh, well, we talked about doing work sets. This is.
That's, this is that proposed change, yes. Exciting stuff. Appreciate you guys bearing with me.
Extremely exciting.
I just wish that we could add that the city council could
Yeah.
also could approve the setbacks.
We will explore that. We will explore that, for sure.
Let Old Dominion know that.
For sure.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We'll go into public hearing. Anyone that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, we'll go out of public hearing. Is there any further discussion that we'd like to have with staff? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move the planning commission recommends approval of the changes to Title 15.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if any. Motion passes. Our final deal tonight is construction standards revision. And I think we all got these in a hard copy form tonight. But I did go through them all on my computer.
Same.
And went through them all, and I had no concerns over the red lines that I saw and read, and I went through all the pages. If there are any questions, I think that we could take those at this time. Dave, do you see a reason to go through all of them individually tonight?
Just to satisfy Byron, he's been waiting all night to be able to go.
Byron, then you ought to put them up. Let's have you go through them.
Sure, yeah.
I'm totally kidding, of course, right?
The most important ones that may be an issue.
Come on up, Byron, give us some time.
Come on, Byron. I wouldn't want to remove your, I wouldn't want to remove your chance of glory. The world is watching. This is on YouTube, you know.
So just a few minor changes to the construction standards. If you want to start at the top, and the first one, we'll just kind of go through them. Down to water lines. We're just clarifying some of the fill material. Just go up just a titch, if you will, Dave. The lower two, talking about low-impact development, or LID. Just trying to clarify some of the definition on that. Typically, in Spanish Fork, when we say LID, we're talking about underground storage. And so we just want to make it more clear that that's kind of what we're talking about when we say LID. Go ahead and scroll down a little bit, Dave. So that, we're just redefining it there, just try to make it more clear that we're talking about chambers and underground storage.
Maybe we could just make people aware that the LID quite often is the, uh, it's usually orange plastic that's in a half-circle.
Yeah, chambers, or storm bricks, or our tanks we use.
That's being buried with gravel and.
Yeah.
So the stormwater goes into those and is dissipated rather than going on down to the river as much as possible. They have overflows and stuff, but.
Definitely. And then below that, since we have a lot of railroad here in Spanish Fork, um, we do a do, a lot of diagnostics with UP and UDOT. Every time we're out there with UP on-site, if they see a tree within a hundred-and-fifty feet of the railroad crossing, they ask us to remove it or cut it down. So, we just wanna make sure it's in our standard that we don't plant them in the first place, um, if they're just gonna ask us to remove them. And then, there's a new state rule, nine-thirty-dash-five-dash-seven, that, um, basically just requires any development within a thousand feet of a railroad crossing, get with the state of Utah or UDOT and, um, schedule diagnostics with them or request one.
I don't know what that says, though.
We, we kept it, um, more that you refer to the state code and, and kind of follow it. And then.
It's really exciting.
Yeah. Some drawings, um, just clarifying some notes. I, I think this is probably the biggest one on, on commercial and multifamily. In practice, we've always, if, if it's like a major road through multifamily, we've always required the seventy-seven-foot right-of-way. So we just wanna make it more clear on our standard drawing. And then we've added some language, so, so we're not saying every road in multifamily just, um, the primary circulation route. So if there's a primary road through, like, a multifamily development or something, we might wanna make sure it's clear that it needs to be a seventy-seven-foot right-of-way. And most of that's for, it provides extra parking on street, so. And the last one is, um, we've had some issues with settlement around inlets and manholes during construction, so, um, this detail, a note's been added to add, to require a jumping jack for compaction, and it's, it's really just a settlement issue, so.
Why does that matter?
Uh, 'cause when it settles a year later, then we have to come back and fill the hole in. Or you get potholes in, in the road, and then we have to fill them in, so. If it's done right.
I remember a manhole recently that had settled.
Oh, yeah. You fill it. Yeah, you fill it, yeah. But if it's done right the first time, it should last, you know.
It's a good addition.
And I think that's it.
If there's a neighborhood that has a manhole that, um, the cement around it is crumbling or settled, do we contact the city?
Yeah, city streets, um, and they'll just put it on their list, and they have a maintenance list where they'll go recolor those. If it's a UDOT road, you can, there's also a click-it fix, fix-it online for UDOT two, so. Any questions?
Any questions? This is a public hearing, so we will go into public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come, and, or is this not a public hearing?
No public hearing.
Oh.
I think it is.
Oh, sorry. There was no note.
Is it or isn't?
It's not on the agenda as such.
It's not on the agenda as a public hearing, but well, I'm going to open a public hearing anyway. And now I'm going to close the public hearing. Any, any questions, discussion, or anything before we ask, before I ask for a, a motion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I made the motion that we were recommending for approval.
Yeah.
We're recommending for approval, construction zone, construction standards twenty-four dot zero-two.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That seems to be the last item on the agenda. Is there anything else that needs to be discussed before I entertain a motion to dismiss? Seeing none, we will sta, uh, I need a, a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second?
It's been, there's a motion and a second, we adjourn.